...the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education for Tuesday, November 13, 2018, and we will begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Matsuoka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas noches. Esta noche tenemos interpretación al español si alguien prefiere escuchar esta presentación en español. Gracias.
Thank you. And headsets for the hearing impaired are available, so please indicate if you need Moving forward, for C-5, we did not have any announcements to come out of closed session, so moving then to C-6, Superintendent's Report, and we are going to move forward. From that, we just had a great recognition honoring Kate Parker and Ishmael Perretas So, we can give him a hand.[104.72][104.72](applause). So we'll have an opportunity to just speak to that maybe a little bit for our board comments and correspondence, so, board members. All right, well, I will say that we did have an opportunity to recognize Kate Parker for 12 years of service, and, yeah, wow, pretty down, you know, down-to-earth wow. It's just, it is a big wow, and we're thankful for all that she's done, and we're thankful that we have her on speed dial, so that whenever we have questions, we'll be able to access her. And also, of course, to Ishmael Perretas Uyoa for his wonderful contribution to the board and two years of bringing forward such amazing work towards equity and access. So, thank you both. Also, I would just like to announce that we're going to have our Coffee with the Board this Friday. This is something that we launched a few months ago. We have met with Harding Elementary, first Ms. Sims Moten and myself with meeting with parents. We had over 40 parents come, and we were pleased to have an opportunity to bring a conversation and transparency and build relationships, which we think is hugely important as board members, is to connect with our community and our schools and our administrative staff. We also had a Coffee with the Board at San Marcos High School with Mr. Ishmael Perretas Uyoa and Ms. Capps. They had the opportunity to meet with parents there, and we will have another one this Friday, which will be at Monroe Elementary, and Ms. Capps and myself will be there from 8:30 to 9:30 to welcome conversation with parents at that elementary school. So I'm hoping this is something that we continue to do going forward, because we really feel, I believe, as a board, that this opportunity to connect and have this transparency and communication is hugely important, and for us to be able to hear your voices and concerns and be able to understand your perspectives. So, thank you for that. We are going to now move to public comments, non-agenda matters within jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Ms. Sims Moten?
Yes, I have two requests to speak, Madam President. Kate O'Connell, followed by Melissa Lowenstein.
Hi, it's Kate Connell. They use the "O" as a lifesaver when they went over the Atlantic Ocean, but it's okay. Anyway, I'm actually here to give appreciation. I heard a lot of appreciations out there for Kate and Ishmael, and that's why I'm here. I am a parent of a student at Santa Barbara High, but I'm also the coordinator of Truth and Recruitment, and Kate Parker was the president of the board when that policy was drafted, and she, we met with her and Pedro Paz and had an amazing discussion, and she thought, this was in May of 2014, and she's like, "Oh, I think we'll get this passed by August." And I was like, "What? Okay." And she presented to Dave Cash, who took it to our high school principals, John being one of them. Actually, John is the one who suggested we bring it to the board. It was a protocol that, among other things, restricted recruiters to two visits a year, stopped them from collecting student contact information directly from students, and Kate, you were just really instrumental and supportive of that policy, which was passed in October 14th. Just want to read the purpose and scope. It is to ensure that district students have balanced access to information about the range of educational and career options available to them, so they can make informed decisions. This exhibit also establishes recruiter contact guidelines to protect student confidentiality and preserve the custodial rights of parents and legal guardians. So that was passed in 2014, and in the last year, Ishmael and Sean and Truth and Recruitment parents and students and community members, as well as veterans who are part of the community, met with you and had some really productive discussions clarifying the best way to implement that policy. So, just want to really appreciate both of your work. I'm sad that you're both going, but I know that you are going to be moving on to greater things, well, other things, as much importance. And as you can see, I'm wearing this shirt, and I know you both are supportive of this, and this will be coming up later, but a shout-out to the work that you've done in that way, and to Sean for all the work that you've done to support our students and make sure that they can make educated choices, know all their options, and have just that balance of access for alternative points of views, different kinds of...
30 seconds.
Thank you. Wow, I guess I got real three minutes, not two minutes.
You do.
I'm not used to this. I'm like, don't know.[427.31][427.31](laughing). Anyway, yeah, I mean, it's an ongoing relationship that started with talking with you all, and I appreciate that at the end of that meeting in October, there was a school board member who was talking about how he just wanted to honor the men and women who served in the armed forces, and Kate, you said, "Yeah, but they're so young."
Right.
And I just think that that's just really important, to know that the responsibility of this board and the schools to make sure our students are given the support and that their confidentiality is supported or protected. Thanks.
Thank you.[465.31][465.31](applause). Melissa Lowenstein, to be followed by Annette Cardero.
So I have some media here, and I realized I was supposed to get approval of this before I brought it and forced it on the media person, so I'm asking permission to show a brief slideshow about AHA, and it's totally okay. If not, I will just speak. It's under three minutes.
Oh.
Yeah? Oh, thank you so much.
The members of the board are all okay with that moving forward? Okay.
It'll take you three minutes to load it. So are we pausing the clock, or are we continuing?
Yes, we'll give you the three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just say a couple of words about this while it's loading. I'm making the most of my week as a cover girl.[514.91][514.91](laughing) For those of you who... It's upside down? There we go. So, The Independent was gracious and wonderful enough to put us on their cover in their yearly issue on education, and I am speaking for AHA. There's 25 of us, and they did put, slot my picture on the cover, but there are 25 of us doing this work in the district, and we just want to say our gratitude again to the district for allowing us to bring social-emotional learning to grade 7 through 12. And I'm going to make sure that Mr. Beckio has the right version of the slideshow.
The one with the short transition. Yeah.
So I'm going to stop talking, and I'm just going to let you take a look at what we're up to and why we think it makes such a big difference in the schools. If anybody feels like singing, clapping, could have some music to go with it.[581.88][581.88](laughing). We're looking at slides of the work that AHA does with youth in the district. AHA stands for Attitude, Harmony, Achievement, and if you want to learn more about us, you can go to our website, ahasb.org.[606.04][606.04](laughing). Are you seeing people you know?
Yeah.
That's so cool.[613.16][613.16](laughing). So you're seeing footage from our peacebuilders programs in the school district, from some service work we did with the Bucket Brigade. We bring teens together in healthy community with skillful facilitation, and we teach them social and emotional skills, and we help them recognize how awesome they are and how they can be fully expressed and deeply connected with people who can support them in times of stress, and how to support each other. That's from Sing It Out, writing appreciations, doing some crafts. Yeah, shout-out names if you see people you know.
30 seconds. Thank you.
So we're serving 2,000 to 3,000 kids a year in school and out of school. This year, we're training educators in our methods at Santa Barbara High and in KARP.
Is that it?
Yeah. So thank you for sharing in that with us, and we just wanted to share some goodness with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Cardero, to be followed by Ann Marie Gott.
Hello, members of the boards, Assistant Superintendents and Superintendent, thank you for being here and for allowing us to be here. I hadn't really anticipated a speaking here tonight, but we were out at UCSB at a cultural event, and I had to drive over here and got stuck behind a traffic accident. So I missed the reception for the two board members who are leaving the board today, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the work that you have done on behalf of the district, on behalf of those students who often didn't have a voice. Ms. Parker and I served together, and at the time that we were on the board together, it wasn't always as unified as we would have liked, and sometimes it really took some strenuous attempts to persuade the board the right things to do. And I just wanted to say to both of you, I know personally how hard it is to make this kind of a commitment and the time that it takes. People think it's just these board meetings, but it's so much more than that. It takes time away from your families, takes time away from your personal life, and for Kate to have done it for 12 years, that's longer than I was able to sustain it, it has just been a tremendous importance to our entire district. The students, all the people who are employed by the district, the members of the community whom the district serves, you have touched thousands and thousands and thousands of lives, and you have done it in a way that has just been so important. So I also want to, having served with Ms. Parker, I just want to say thank you, Kate, for being one of the greatest colleagues ever. And I brought something with me because I am so thrilled that you... I teach at Santa Barbara City College, as most of you know. Kate is moving on to our Board of Trustees, and I am so thrilled to have you there. And so I brought you a few welcoming items, so you will remember who your allegiances are to now.[905.04][905.04](laughing). Thank you.[907.04][907.04](applause).
Ann Marie?
Hi, my name's Ann Marie Gott, and this is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings. Decided to speak because I just came from a city council meeting that I thought that you should be aware of, and also to let you know about a project that is right next to the Santa Barbara Junior High School. I don't know if you are concerned about safe passage and travel to schools. I don't know if you are concerned about sidewalks and how kids actually get to Santa Barbara Junior High School, but there's a project that is at 711 North Milpus that will be seen on Monday at the Architectural Board of Review in Santa Barbara. It's up for final review, and your board should have actually known about it years ago when it started through the process, but you were never notified, from what I can understand. You should have been notified because the Santa Barbara Junior High School is adjacent to the property, but when I came to the school this summer, no one was really interested in it. Let me tell you about 711 North Milpus. It will provide unaffordable housing to Santa Barbara. There will also be a small sidewalk of some sort, and I don't really even understand that it's actually a sidewalk, because it's on private property, that will end in a loading zone. So children actually coming around the corner from Milpus are going to walk through a loading zone across a private parking lot into the street to get to the school, instead of having a real sidewalk. They shouldn't actually be doing that, and your board should have known, because there was an agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and your school district sometime in the 1980s, that any development, that you would be notified, and you would actually get a list of all of the projects that might affect your kids as they're coming back and forth to school. But I don't believe that that's actually ever happened. And if anyone is interested in attending that meeting on Monday, I would really urge them to come, because it is going to actually gentrify the neighborhood, it is going to bring unaffordable housing to Milpus, and it actually, I personally believe, it's going to endanger the kids, because they're going to be walking straight into a loading zone as they come off a sidewalk, through a parking lot, and then to the back of the school, because it's right there at the corner of Milpus and East Ortega. The next thing I wanted to let you know about, and this may or may not be relevant to anyone, but our city council just decided that they were going to go ahead and allow at the commuter lot at the corner of Castillo and Curio...
Finish your sentence.
Forty tiny homes for the homeless without any noticing. If it can be dumped in that area of town, it can be dumped anywhere, and people need to, the city needs to be transparent, and the people need to understand what may happen in their areas. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment, Madam President.
Thank you. So moving on to D, Acceptance of Donations for November 13, 2018.
I move to accept donations with gratitude.
I just had a quick question on the donations. Do I need to wait until after the second?
I'll second it.
I just did have a question, and I did speak to Ms. Chitay and actually Mr. Rickman, I don't think either one are here today. I was just concerned that on the donations with regards to iPads to Washington School, I was just trying to determine if there were extra ones that we needed or we were short of materials, and so I just wanted to find out if we have a process for donations for learning materials. And so it may not be answered today, but I just wanted to bring that up in terms of my concerns with that. Also, when we're having such large donations, although very much appreciated, because I know the things we're not able to do, the community certainly steps in, but when we're having those large donations, we want to make sure, are they MOUs that may need to happen as a result that donation is coming forth? I know we have about a $29,000 donation, and it just wasn't really clear as to what it was going to be and what the responsibility of the district was.
Thank you, Ms. Sims Moten. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Got a call and vote.
I'm sorry. We need to vote.
Yes. Call in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items that fellow board members would like to pull?
Yeah, I'd just like to pull item E1, please. I'm sorry, E11.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more time. E10.
So, E10.
The last one. Yep.
Okay.
E21.
Ms. Parker?
E18, briefly.
And then we have two...
We have a consent agenda item, request to speak on Agenda Item 10.
So, okay, so we have that pulled as well.
Yes.
So typically, we move these to the end of the meeting. Are these, I guess I would just ask if these are brief comments, quick comments? They all are quick comments? Okay. So why don't we go ahead and discuss them now? Why don't we start with E10?
Great, well, thank you. I just pulled it. It's the Approval Contract between AHA, Attitude, Harmony, and Achievement, and Santa Barbara Unified School District, out of full support for it. I was happy that our public speaker already gave three minutes and some visuals, so there's no need for that, but really, I just wanted to pull it, because in the spirit of transparency, there's been a lot of focus on our work, as there should be, on social and emotional learning, and this is one piece of it. It's $21,000, and I just wanted to, I could have Dr. Wagnett speak to it, but if you wanted to just give a sentence or two about what this actually funds, again, just so that the public is aware of how we are working with our students on social and emotional learning. Thanks.
So, is my mic on? This summer, Dr. Simmons requested entering into an agreement with AHA to pilot some work around social-emotional learning. There are two primary facets to this. The first is the training of up to 34 teachers. They ended up, two full-day trainings with 29 9th-grade teachers, and that training also includes ongoing one-on-one support as requested for the teachers. It also includes an additional training, full-day training in December and another in the spring. So that's one half of the MOU. The other MOU is, half of the MOU, is to provide a once-a-week class on social-emotional learning to the ASB leadership class at Santa Barbara High School throughout the 2018-19 school year.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wagnett. Thank you.
And then we have the request to speak, Mike Aguilar.
How you doing?
Evening.
Nicholas Aguilar. I'm also in support of Ethnic Studies and what's going on, and just want to say that it's important, as well as what we do in AHA with SEL, and having also Ethnic Studies be included as a way to be able to support our youth from both ways, is SEL and also education. So I'm a facilitator at AHA. I am a head facilitator and also a peacebuilder coordinator, just to support this MOU as well with the school district. I grew up in Santa Barbara. I've been working and living here in Santa Barbara with, in various capacities, just working with youth, as I started volunteering all the way to now, and I just want to say that for our program, seeing our youth, I'm beyond proud of the youth that come in. They're already amazing, resilient, powerful human beings that are leaders in our community, and if they know it or not, they find out through our program, through social-emotional learning, where they cultivate empathy and peacebuilding in our community. Our teens really do connect with a lot of the youth that's out there, whether already with their social groups that they're in, but also with, like, people who are outside on the margins. They do a job of just connecting with those students, and I've seen a lot of students who could, have potentially been those to harm others or themselves and be able to reach out to them, and just seeing the compassion that they build for those youth and just in school climate, like, what they do with teachers and talking to them and having conversations. It's amazing to see them, and when they report back to me, I'm always amazed. I'm like, wow, y'all do, I mean, I'm the facilitator, but you teach me a lot in what you do, and so, and just seeing that program for me as where youth, where I was involved in everything, but seeing this kind of program and what it does for youth and what it does for the community, really being able to connect and see our teens be empowered to, like, then go through, like, Ethnic Studies and find their voice and be able to use it there, or just be out about, just like, if they were ever in a space where, you know, they were quiet, they find their voice through other programs, like Sing It Out, and any kind of, like, vehicle that we use as well, is like, programs like our creative group. If they're not really about speaking out in public, they find ways to creatively, like, express themselves and connect with other people who are in that same kind of boat. And so there's, like, those various forms of being able to help our youth, and so, any form that we can do that, in our after-school programs, in school, as well as out in the community, any form where we can provide that support for our students, it speaks to their experience and what they can do with it, because we get teens that go off to college and they create that space out there, and they just speak to, coming back to saying, like, "I did Thorns and Roses with my college dorm, and I got them connected where nobody spoke with each other," you know, like, that kind of space is created. So if we keep teaching it, there'd be more of that, you know, where SEL goes out, so please support. Thank you.
Thank you.[1611.33][1611.33](applause).
So E18?
This is just a quick question for Mr. Vizolini, and that's about the timeline, because it says, it's obviously, it's November, and it's hoping to go to DSA September 2018, and that doesn't, it seems optimistic.
I have to apologize.
That's okay.
The dates are wrong. I would, I would request that I can get back to the board with the correct dates.
Sure.
This is for the Architectural Services Agreement, so we can get the design done. I'm not, I don't have an answer for where those dates came from.
Just, just as, that could be something that comes in the Superintendent's Friday Letter, whenever you have the right timeline. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And E21?
Yes, this question is also for Mr. Vizolini. I just first want to thank you for moving the date up with regards to repairing the pavement at Adams School. In fact, I think this came forth in a public comment, and we actually had some crumbling visual here to see what's actually happening, so thank you for that. But in the meantime, so I know it's sometime before we get there, so what's happening to make sure that our children are safe during the time that we're waiting to repair it? Are there, like, yellow cautions that they're not able to access until we get that repaired?
I don't believe it's that bad. To be perfectly honest with you, we have walked it with Flowers and Associates ahead of time, and with the principal, and with some parents. We have a plan to do some grinding. There were some places, we bought a crack seal machine and made some mitigation of that, you know, effects, and it was their first attempt, so the idea is that they've been over there to scrape some of those down, so that they're not sticking up. That's really the issue at this point, but we are planning on doing this this summer.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, so it looks like we're just going to move forward with the consent agenda items, and do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we move on. That passes unanimously. So we are now moving forward to our public hearing. I will now close the regular board meeting for our public hearing, item F1, second reading, sunshining of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Proposal for Successor Contract Negotiations with Santa Barbara Teachers Association. During this public hearing, we will allow three minutes, six if it's needed for translation. Public hearings are a time to listen to public comment, but we don't discuss the item. Do we have any public comment at this time?
No request to speak at this time.
All right. Is there any comments by Dr. Beckio?
Good evening, Dr. Reed, members of the board. These are just, again, your second viewing, and also an opportunity for the community to see these, but this is our sunshining of our proposal to go to negotiation with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Intention is to negotiate wages and compensation, health and... Intention is to negotiate wages and compensation, health and welfare benefits, and hours and conditions. And we also have the second viewing of the sunshining for the teacher, Santa Barbara Teachers Association and their negotiations with Santa Barbara Unified, and their intentions are to negotiate wages, health and welfare evaluations, and, I'm sorry, that's the CSEA.
Hold off on that one.
I'll hold off on the CSEA one. That's the first time you're going to see that tonight. Wages and compensation, health and welfare benefits, and hours and conditions for...
Okay. So, I believe, Dr. Beckio, thank you, and that brings us to the end of our public hearing, since we did not have public comment. And I now will open the public hearing for item F2, and I'm going to hit that gavel again. Second reading, sunshining of the Santa Barbara Unified School District proposal for successor contract negotiations with California School Employee Association. Do we have any public comments at this time?
No request to speak.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Beckio, would you like to add anything at this time with regards to this? Second reading.
Sorry, I'm trying to do the technology and also get my items. So this is the CSEA one?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is your, this should be your first, this should be your first viewing of this. Is that correct?
It's actually our second, yes.
Can I bring that for you?
Yes.
Board meeting? Okay. So, again, they are intending to negotiate wages and compensation, health and welfare, and, sorry, that's the SBTA one. Wages and, wages and health and benefits, evaluations, and the catastrophic leave bank. And so, the, the CSEA's intention is to negotiate those, and then we'll bring those back for, for action at our next board meeting with your consent.
Thank you. So thank you for this. Think, that brings us to the end of this public hearing, and the last of the gavel for a moment. We will now return to our regular meeting, our action agenda items. So moving forward to board action on student discipline, education code 48918, case number 201819-06.
In the cases 20181906, stipulated agreement, move approval of expulsion with enforcement suspended two semesters, which ends June 2019.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously. Moving to board action on student discipline, education code 48918, case number 201819-07.
In the case of 201819-07, stipulated agreement, move approval, full expulsion, two semesters, which ends June 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We will now move to action agenda item, approval of second amendment and modification to superintendent's employment agreement. So I'd like to share that in closed session, the board has completed its rigorous annual review of the superintendent, and will be adjusting his contract. Pursuant to the terms of his contract, the board is required to complete its annual evaluation on or before December 1st of each year. Before us is an amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement that extends Superintendent Matsuoka's contract for one year from June 30th, 2020, to June 30th, 2021. The only other changes consist of a small increase in contribution, in the contribution to the IRC 403B Retirement Plan, and allowing the superintendent to receive pay for four additional vacation days not taken. So I'll now turn to the board if there are any comments or questions by our board members. Ms. Capps?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to make a comment. I just want to speak to the timing of this, because I've received some questions from parents, and some of you might be wondering about the timing. And also, regrettably, when I went to the San Marcos coffee with the board, I just misspoke. I was misinformed myself. I thought that the process was, his contract was up December 31st, when in fact, our board has just stated, is required to take action by December 1st. So I've apologized to a few of those parents, but just want to speak to that process and timing, just purely from the process. Not only is it required in his contract that we take this action tonight, but I also believe, having gone through this process and the vigorous evaluation that we've done, that it is our responsibility as a board to have done that evaluation. It is us who has, who have, he has reported to day in, day out for the last two years. It is us who conducted this very thorough review, again, starting in August, fully agendized, as transparent as can be for a personnel evaluation, and quite an extensive one. So therefore, I just wanted to give an explanation why this vote is happening this evening as opposed to in the future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. So do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Superintendent Matsuoka's contract modifications, and thank you so much for your service this past year.
And I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you, Mr. Matsuoka, for your service. Moving forward to action agenda item number four, approval of resolution 2018/19-22, amended conflict of interest code and appendix pursuant to government code, section 87306. Dr. Beckio?
Thank you very much. This is a resolution that we bring forward to you each year. It is required that we bring this forward each year and have updates to that, this actual resolution made. You will see in the appendix that essentially there's just a couple of language changes, and hopefully you saw the red strikeouts, and they're pretty minor language changes. But most important and most notable is the fact that we have all of our new positions or positions that have changed titles in this new appendix, and you'll see those also in red. And so, recommending that you adopt the new resolution with the updated language.
Thank you, Dr. Beckio. Do we have any questions or comments, board? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to action agenda item five, adoption of resolution 201819-23 regarding the elimination or reduction of classified services. Dr. Beckio?
Okay. Thank you very much. And this item, let me zoom in. This item before you, ED Code does allow us to issue layoffs for either lack of work or lack of funds, and this particular item is lack of funds at La Cumbre Junior High, necessitating the reduction in time, which would constitute a layoff. So the proposal here is that we reduce this position from a 1.0 to a 0.75. I believe that's a loss of two hours per day. So it goes from an eight-hour position to a six-hour position.
Thank you, board. Yes, Ms. Sims-Morton?
So is this position currently filled?
Yes.
Okay. So it, is it, are we actually laying that position off as opposed to just notifying that the hours are being reduced?
The hours are being reduced. It is, it is a layoff of two hours in that position, though it's not a full layoff of the entire position, but the person serving an eight-hour position, they'll be reduced to six.
So...
So we will notify that employee that they would be reduced to six hours.
So I just, I'm just trying to understand layoff versus reduction in hours, because layoff means you're, you're no longer there. So is it just a misunderstanding of language?
It's a reduction in hours.
Okay. Not necessarily a layoff. They're not leaving.
The, the employee will still be in a position. It'll just be a six-hour position.
Okay. And then my next question is, so how does this impact student services to students at all, or?
That I'm, I'm not aware of, and I don't know if Sean can help out with this particular position at La Cumbre. It's STEAM. I think it's the, it's the lab tech position, isn't it?
This is, if you notice the funding source, this is from the sites, what we call LCAP funding, or O790, supplemental grant funding, and there were some shifts to that site's funding to just ensure fiscal solvency this year.
So there's no direct negative impact to students?
So the eight hours actually extends beyond a school day, and this individual's providing direct support for students, so the, the students should not feel the effects of the two-hour layoff in terms of how it's, how it affects their instructional day.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
At this point, we, we actually don't, obviously, in this materials, we don't know who this employee is, but I just want to be sure that, that the La Cumbre community knows about all of this, and that, that nobody's being blindsided. So I just want to check on that.
Okay. I'm, I'm not aware of that being something that you've talked about at the site, have you, Sean? I, I would imagine that the employee is aware.
The site is aware.
All right. Do you have anything more to add, Ms.?
No. I mean, I, I don't like doing this kind of thing after the school year has started, and somebody is, and it's rare to see it come forward at this particular time. And so I, I move forward, you know, I will, I will go ahead and move approval, but I recognize that this, this certainly will disrupt one employee and could, and could disrupt a program. And so I'm, I hope that this is the sort of thing that in the future, and I know that this is a very unusual year at La Cumbre, but that this is something, hopefully with, when there is a new principal in place, there is, we're able to keep an eye on that, and so that this doesn't happen at this time of year in particular. And I'll go ahead and move that we approve the adoption of resolution 201819-23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, though, for those comments. I think that it's something we want to be aware of as we move forward. Moving on to action agenda item six, approval of the facility memorandum of understanding MOU between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy, DPEAF. Mr. Matsuoka?
So we have kept the board informed through many different reports along the way. This started actually back in November, almost a year ago, with the submission of the request for funds. So this is the culmination of a long conversation with the DPEA Foundation leaders. Craig Price has been the primary author of this MOU, and it outlines, I would say, the commitments of both parties, the district as well as the foundation, and you can see the, the fundraising goal that the foundation has committed themselves to. And so this MOU is placed strategically first before the next item, which is asking your approval of the full architect design agreement, the design to the whole spec. And so, what, what I appreciate about the leaders in the foundation is the fundraising has already begun, and they are ready to transfer funds to the architect contract. So rest assured that they are fundraising, and there's plenty of, of steps where we can press pause should we need to. But I'm very confident that the foundation and their leadership will raise the funds to secure this vision. So there's, it's actually a fairly short MOU. Mr. Price did a masterful job at re-crafting it. Be glad to answer any questions before you consider this.
Do we have any questions? Sims-Morton?
Yeah, I just have a question, if you could pull that up again, Sean. Just want to understand, I believe it's E, the fiscal impact, is, is that a soft match, meaning that we've already granted other contracts? That's not a direct $4 million hard match to this project, right? It's through other projects that we funded? I'm just trying to understand what that means.
So we are matching that through the Measure I funds that were set aside for Dos Pueblos High School for replacement of portable classrooms. So we have that match in hand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just wanted to say that I do appreciate the process of the unfolding of this amazing project, and the transparency at which you provided us with information was very helpful. And, and so by getting to this place, we've done a lot of work in analyzing it and providing opportunities for questions, and so it's, it's an exciting place to be in. Ms. Parker?
I'll echo that and just say, you know, so many times our foundations at our school sites step up to assist and to make better what we would have done to, to, in a, in a more limited way, just because of the scope. And I appreciate, it looks like their, DPEA will be trying to raise just over $3 million towards this project, and I think that it's really commendable. I think it's going to be a great project when it's done, and I'm excited that I get to sign off on it now and hopeful to be there when it's finished.
Would you like to make the motion, Ms. Parker?
And I'll note, too, that, that the total amount will raise at least 6.4 million. I was looking at number 10 above that for, yeah, yeah. Mr. Matsuoka, you're probably going, oh, no, let's say 6 million, right? Yeah, even better. And yes, I will move approval of the facility memorandum of understanding between Santa Barbara Unified and the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Foundation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Moving on to action agenda item seven, approval of agreement for architectural services with Kruger Benson Zimmer Architects, Inc., KBZ, for the Dos Pueblos High School CTE Pavilion Project. Mr. Vizelini?
Good evening, board. As Mr. Matsuoka pointed out, we wanted to make sure that this item got put on the agenda as an action item after the MOU was agreed on. Similar to the MOU, there are some pieces in the architectural agreement that allow a pause, so if funding levels aren't met, the building can be constructed in different iterations. So we're presenting this for approval.
Thank you, board. All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Moving on to action agenda item eight, approval of agreement with PMSM/19-6 Architects, Inc., for design services related to the Dos Pueblos High School storefront replacement project. Mr. Vizelini, you cannot sit down yet.
Thank you very much. This is an action item probably because it's such, you know, mainly because it's such a large project. So we've finally come to a decision on what we want to do. We came in with a very, very low architectural services agreement cost at $80,000. Normally, we're at about 11 and a half percent, and this is a $7 million job, so you can see the savings is significant. We think that we're going to be able to construct this, pardon me. I think that we've, we're going to be able to construct this pretty rapidly. We think that we'll get it done in one summer. We anticipated possibly a year's worth of time, but I think that we've, we've settled on a, a method that will work, and we'll get a lease-leaseback contractor on board once this is approved.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, so we've had some pilot construction in this arena, and the last, that I think that we heard as a board was that there, that you were waiting to see how the last, the last pilot went, because the, the earlier versions of it weren't necessarily making a big impact on the climate in our Dos Pueblos classrooms with such poor HVAC, poor insulation. And so can you talk a bit about what you decided to go forward with and why?
Yes. So we, we took two different iterations, window sizes, window heights. We actually mocked up the classroom with the larger windows that are higher up that people thought were a little too high, and we had one of our project managers actually polled the teachers and the students, and we got a poll of probably over 100 responses. And so we basically taped off the top of the window, so you couldn't see that, you know, the top half anymore, and we asked, what does the view look like? What is, what is the impact in your classroom? The fans had basically no change, and we kind of, as a group, decided that that's probably a waste of money. We tried two fans, we tried four fans, the temperature in the room didn't change at all, and that was in a room that was on a corner, that had two windows where we could get some... get some cross ventilation, so putting it in a single room with, you know, with one wall facing out was going to be difficult. There's also some significant DSA structural review and costs associated with that by trying to mount those fans in the ceiling. There's a lot of ductwork up there, there's a lot of lighting, it's a pretty challenging part of the project, so we omitted that, and I think we're going to see a significant savings while still getting operable windows that really improve the inside view and the experience inside the classroom.
All right, so we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. We will now move on to Action Agenda Item Nine, Second Reading and Recommendation for Approval of Updates and Revisions to Board Policy 6146 dot one. High school graduation requirements, including incorporation of ethnic studies as a graduation requirement. We have public comment.
Yes, we have 22 requests to speak.
So we're going to start with public comment, then we'll move to Ms. Carey, then we'll move to board deliberations. If we could start with public comment?
Yes, we will. So as I said, we have 22 requests to speak, so we will reduce that time to 90 seconds. As you're all aware, that we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to speak, so we will see that time adjusted to 90 seconds. And if you've prepared a speech for three minutes, try to drill it down to 90 seconds so I'm not cutting you off in the middle of your speak. So the first one we have is Simone Russkamp. Simone is coming, yes, she's coming. I have Scott Russkamp following her.
Good evening. I actually wasn't planning to speak, I just wanted to make sure that I share that I was in support of ethnic studies now, but I guess since I'm first and excited to hear what Fabi and the rest of our youth are here to share, I think it's imperative that we do this, especially with urgency. I think it's also important that we make sure what's done is of quality. So many of our students have been asking and waiting for this to be done, looking for mirrors in their classrooms, and I think it's about time that we made good on that. I'm sure as many of you know, the black population in Santa Barbara is quite small, and so it's even harder than to be in a classroom where you not only do not see mirrors, but then perhaps you hear from those instructing you a version of history that perhaps is different, that perhaps neglects what your people have contributed, so I would ask you to support this, and again, make sure that it's quality. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott Russkamp to be followed by Julie Deere.
Hi, my name is Scott Russkamp. I've been living in and Santa Barbara for 10 years. As I just had my first child in May, it won't be too long before I'm the parent of a student. So I moved to Santa Barbara from the Midwest, where I was raised in a rural conservative environment. I remember enjoying listening to radio programs in high school that commonly insulted liberals and immigrants of color, and I remember blaming not getting into colleges on their need for diversity quotas. Since then, I've read more, I've met more people, and I'm now active in local organizations to fight racism. I've still got a lot to learn, but I look back on my thinking in high school and can't believe I thought that way. What's even harder is that most of the people I grew up with still share those views because they weren't as lucky as I was to have the opportunity to learn more about people who are different.
30 seconds.
So making ethnic studies a graduation requirement gives everyone the opportunity to learn about people who are different and how they've been treated throughout history so that we can be understanding of each other instead of insulting. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Deere to be followed by Bonnie Raisen.
Good evening, Board. I have a multi-ethnic family. My husband's here, and he is from Colombia, his parents immigrated here, and so my concern is with the recent statistics of our test scores, that our kids continue to fall behind in the world, global economy, and I would like to see this not be mandatory. In addition to that, I would like to be able, as a parent and a stakeholder, to be able to review the curriculum. I'd like to know a little bit more about the goals and objectives, and since we are members of the community, there may be, it seems like there's a lot of different views on what ethnic studies can be, should be, and as an ethnic, a person that has children of multi-ethnicity, I'd like to be able to have an input in that, so thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Raisen to be followed by Will Rivera.
Good evening. My name's Bonnie Raisen. Thank you for this opportunity. I am opposed to mandatory ethnic studies. I think, I believe, that children should have one language mandatory, and that is English in our public schools. I also believe that if children are college-bound, students are college-bound, that they should have the required language requirements, they should fulfill the language requirements, but to have, to have a study, ethnic studies, it's going to, it's going to make their study load and their achievement levels, I think, a little bit lower because they'll be concentrating on that one particular program. I also like the idea that Latin is taught at Dos Pueblos.
30 seconds.
I really believe that it should be taught in all schools since it's the foundation of the English language. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will Rivera to be followed by James Fittner.
Thank you, Dr. Reed and members of the board. My name is Will Rivera, and I think it's awesome, we have so much diversity in this community. You know, I went to Santa Barbara High School, and I had friends that were black, they were like brown, they were white, they were Chinese, we didn't really care. We were all like together, and it seems like, you know, you're trying to impose ethnic studies is, seems a little bit pretentious that you're like making a statement about like, well, we want you to know about us, but we should know about the world. Do you have time to spend learning about, let's say, the Japanese or another culture where they say, you know, humility is a really important part of our, of our program? So, I mean, you know, when we were in high school, we did cool things like we were in car clubs, and we celebrated our different ethnicities because we wanted to make people think that we were, you know, like cool. So I appreciate your passion, let's make that, can we create that passion to something a little bit more constructive? I don't think it should be mandatory. Thank you very much.
James Fittner to be followed by Isabel Huerta.
I mean, isn't this typical that I have a request before I begin? My daughter had offered to give me her minutes, would it be possible to go to three?
I mean, we're at this point, no. We need you 90 seconds.
All right, well, so I apologize to everyone here, this is the abridged version, but thank you for the opportunity. I have a dream that my four children would be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Any agreement? If you also share this dream, then you must vote against mandatory ethnic studies requirement. At the beginning of this meeting, we all, many of us had said the pledge of allegiance. It's one nation, not two, not three, not yours, not mine, one nation.
30 seconds.
Indivisible, not by race or by ethnicity. The board, I'll jump to the end here. I would ask that we focus on character and not color, use real data, and reject the temptation to force a bitter ethnic studies drink down the young throats of our children. Most importantly, remain true to the aspirational pledge we have all made. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Isabel Huerta to be followed by Michael Hensley.
Good evening, Dr. Reed, members of the board, and Superintendent Matsuoka. My name is Izzy Huerta, I'm ASB President of San Marcos High School, and I'm here this evening to tell you a personal story. In my freshman year at San Marcos, I spent a lot of time organizing as a part of the Ethnic Studies Now Coalition. After an amazing presentation and workshop the Coalition had hosted, I posted on my Instagram a presentation slide that stuck with me, stating, "White privilege is your history, being a part of the core curriculum, and mine being taught as an elective." I gushed about the amazing work of ethnic studies and my hope for the future of ethnic studies in our schools. I was not ready for what happened next. The conversation devolved into a frenzy of Nazi propaganda, finger pointing, and 352 comments later, I was bombarded with notifications directed towards me with the hashtag, "Build that wall and go back to Mexico." However, there was no actual conversation of ethnic studies.
30 seconds.
At the age of 14, I knew the level of racism I was experiencing was not just an issue of kids being mean, but rather misplaced and misinformed anger. If the question begs, why is ethnic studies an important and relevant topic in our community, I go back to my experience I shared with you. We cannot build empathy between my peers without the system taking responsibility for helping to build it. The data bears this out in this time of ethnic studies now. Thank you.
Michael Hensley. And Sheri to be followed by Sheri Rosenberg.
Hi, everybody. My name is Milo, I'm a senior at DP and part of the on-campus ethnic studies group there. So I'm just up here today to recognize all the hard work that's gone into showing the school board how much we care about this. Since our on-campus club at DP was kind of more formally established last year, we've been meeting every Wednesday at lunch and oftentimes after school, not only educating ourselves about the importance of ethnic studies, but also planning events and reaching out within our community to make it very known how necessary this requirement is and how much our community supports it. So to keep this brief, in conclusion, a lot of work by a lot of really incredible students and parents and organizers and supporters has gone into this, and we're really grateful that it's finally happening. Thank you guys so much for your support.
So I just want to remind us, we've got to keep this moving, so I appreciate the clapping, but Sheri Rosenberg to be followed by Betsy Limon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sheri Rosenberg. I'm a parent, and I am very interested in being on the Curriculum Committee for Ethnic Studies, and also I was wondering, could those committee meetings be transparent where more parents could perhaps participate and observe and look at the materials? I think that I've heard throughout some of these board meetings that it's very important for transparency and parent participation. I know that's a very big part of the LCAP document that came out, and I just wanted to express my interest in participating. Thank you.
Betsy Limon to be followed by Marcus Lopez.
Hi, my name is Betsy Limon. I just want to say that I agree. I do think that it should be a requirement.
Excuse me. Do you want to start the clock?
Oh, okay. Ready? Okay. I feel like I was a second-class citizen before I started taking these classes in higher-level education, which I think it's unfair. It's unfair for everybody. We are a nation of immigrants. Me being a person of color, I feel like I was not worthy. I was not worthy of belonging. I felt like I was fighting to belong, and until I started taking these classes in higher education level is when I knew that I did belong and I did, I was worthy, and that's why I do think it's necessary. That's all I have to say.
Marcus Lopez to be followed by Veronica Valdez.
My name is Marcus Lopez, I'm a parent and a chairperson of the Bahia Chumash Tribal Council. Article 15 of the United Nations Declaration of Rights to Indigenous Peoples states, "Indigenous people have the right of their dignity, diversity, and their culture, traditions, histories, aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information." Please, Board, this requirement is essential. We've been working with the board and the community all these years, and we should, I'm in favor, I'm passing this Ethnic Studies Now, and I too, I'm a parent and wish to participate within the curriculum building. Thank you very much.
Veronica Valdez to be followed by John Esteban.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Valades. I teach Chicana and Chicano Studies at Cal State Channel Islands. I'm also an education consultant that focuses on ethnic studies and cultural proficiency training for teachers. By now, we all know the benefits of ethnic studies and how it benefits all students. I think we need parent ethnic studies, probably also in the community, that might be a good idea. As a professor, I'd like to share that when I have many of my students, most of my students, 99.9% of my students that come into my classroom, and they're students of color that were born and raised in this country, come into the classroom and do not know the contributions of their own people in this country, that's very sad, for them to learn it for the very first time by the time they get to a university, and we know the school-to-prison pipeline, we know that there are leaks in the educational system for students of color that don't ever make it to the university, and those that do make it to the university many times don't take an ethnic studies class. So we need to get them while they're young, we really do, and also want to just put out there that curriculum is one thing, but the pedagogical approaches are another. They have to be culturally relevant, culturally proficient, and the teachers need to be trained in critical consciousness as well. Thank you.
John Esteban to be followed by Nicholas Silver.
All right, good evening. My name is John Esteban. I'm a first-year student at Santa Barbara City College, and I'm a graduate from Dos Pueblos High School, and I come representing the long-fought struggle of the youth and community to make ethnic studies a graduation requirement. School board, I'm hopeful and I'm positive that you and all, that you all will make the right decision, that you will care and value ethnic studies at our high schools just as much as any other curriculum, that you will put forth the right educators to properly inform of our experiences and perspectives, put forth the leaders to guide our students through the storm of hate and bigotry we are facing as a nation, when white supremacy and anti-Semitic efforts feel emboldened to march down the streets of Charlottesville, Virginia, to shoot up a synagogue in Pittsburgh and murder 11 people, when we fail to teach the American people of our core values. This is why we work endlessly to educate each other of our different cultures and backgrounds of our various racial and ethnic groups.
30 seconds.
This is why we work endlessly to embrace our diversity and iterate the imperative need for ethnic studies. It is up to us to decide how we deal with this issue. It's up to us to stand up against hate and bigotry and replace it with love, respect, and education, in honor of those who came before us and those who will follow. Trasoca, mati, ometeo.
Nicholas Silver to be followed by Barbara Pernell.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Silver, and I'm a senior at Dos Pueblos High School, and I strongly support ethnic studies as a graduation requirement. I was introduced to ethnic studies now last year at the forum they had at Dos Pueblos. The passion and hard work of my friends and the entire ESN Coalition has really inspired me and made me want to speak up. I believe an ethnic studies requirement is long overdue here in Santa Barbara and everywhere. Sorry. Now more than ever, it is crucial that everyone's story is heard, especially those who have been silenced in the past. To have an open, honest, and inclusive dialogue, we first need to understand each other. I have two younger brothers enrolled in Santa Barbara Public Schools, and I hope that the hard work we have done as a community will pay off for them. For my brothers and all the future students of SBUSD, I hope you will pass this bill tonight. Thank you.
Fabiola Gonzalez, because Barbara, you had requested that your time be given to Barbara, and we're not, that's not what we allow. I understand that each speaker gets the 90 seconds that we've done in the middle. So either you're going to speak for yourself or she'll, okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fabiola Gonzalez, and on November 30, 2015, I put the call out to the community for the need for Ethnic Studies, for us to mobilize together as a community and to push together for an Ethnic Studies High School graduation requirement in the SB Unified School District. I'm here today representing Ethnic Studies Now Santa Barbara, which is the grassroots community coalition that was formed three years ago and has been active ever since in bringing people of all ages and all backgrounds together to create a change in ourselves, our families, our schools, and our greater Santa Barbara community. If you are a member, supporter, or ally of Ethnic Studies Now, please stand up. If you have ever attended our Ethnic Studies block parties, community forums, film screenings, workshops, meetings, purchased a shirt, sticker, button, please stand up. Remain standing. We want to publicly thank all of you for your support. We especially want to recognize the youth who have been very fierce in leading our community from the start. You are part of this movement because you want a better future for students, younger siblings, nieces, and nephews, and you want mirrors and windows for the future to come. We also want to give a special thanks to you, School Board members, and Assistant Superintendent Sean Carey, in being accountable to our community and for everything that you do for our schools. It's important to us that students, parents, and community members continue to have a voice in our schools and in this requirement. It is important to us that for future generations that they have access to Ethnic Studies and that we secure funding to support curriculum and professional development for teachers. We are the ones that we have been waiting for. If there is one thing that Ethnic Studies teaches us, it is that we are makers of history, and I believe that indeed tonight we are making history. Thank you.
Abraham Rosanna followed by Cosmali Lopez. Abraham is, Abraham here? He's making his way. Okay.
Favi. Favi. Favi is just like the best person, I think. Good evening. It's nice to see you again. I just want to express gratitude for the work that you've done and the work that's being done for this specific movement. I come as a representative of Santa Barbara City College. I work with a grant over there. It's a grant supporting flexible learners, which means students that tend to be not full-time, students that are non-traditional students, maybe parents, transitioning students from incarceration into school. And a lot of the work that we're doing is bringing in culturally responsive pedagogies into the curriculum and into the content and into the classroom, you know, into the spaces where people learn, where culture is actually created, you know, where we interact with each other and engage in ideas and move forward. Because a lot of the things that we've learned, I mean, for myself, weren't things that I liked. And the one thing I love about Ethnic Studies is that it's us telling our stories and teaching and us learning. And I'm just expressing that energy. I'm throwing that out there. I'm a product of this district, and I think I'm much more than just like another student. And everybody in here and all the students that keep coming and have gone forward, like, just.
Cosmali Lopez to be followed by Tanya Hyde.
Hello, everyone, Board members. My name is Cosmali Lopez, and I'm here as a member of the Chumash Community of Ethnic Studies Now and a student at Santa Barbara High School. I know we all dream sometimes of that world, that world which allows many worlds to fit. I'd like to take a second to think about a quote from Fanon where he says that, "What do I want?" The end of the world by Jove. I'd like us to think about this dialectical, this movement, this rebirth and destruction that is involved with Ethnic Studies. We're all here tonight to hopefully say that tomorrow and the many years of struggle that we've all gone through, that our communities have gone through, that we will continue to go through, that one day we'll be able to turn to each other and look and say, "We now live in a new world, a world where many worlds are possible." And so for that, and for all the communities, all the struggle that we've gone through, and for the love of the struggle and for liberation of all peoples, I'd like to support Ethnic Studies Now. Thank you.
Tanya Hyde to be followed by Pratik Raghun.
Thank you, Board. I'm Tanya Hyde, and I'm speaking on behalf of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Santa Barbara. And I'm here to encourage you to vote in favor of adopting Ethnic Studies as a requirement for students graduating from our public high schools. This is not only an issue for our schools, but it's an issue for all of us, because these young people will become the adults leading our community, our country, and our world. It's becoming increasingly clear that the inability to consider viewpoints, life experiences, norms, and values, other than those which we were raised, causes social, cultural, and political disarray. It's not an exaggeration to say that our very lives depend on a more comprehensive, diverse, and inclusive education for our youth, and this is the first step. But it's not the last step. If the vote tonight is in favor of making Ethnic Studies a graduation requirement, we would like to encourage you to listen to the voices of the young leaders of our community who have been fighting for many years to bring this initiative to fruition. We ask that you directly invite these young people to play an active role in the development of the program so that it will be effective from their point of view. All too often, our attempts at inclusivity and cultural sensitivity fall short of our intentions and goals and create further social and cultural divisions. We hope these young leaders will be able to directly consult on how you design the program that will have positive impact on who you intend it to have. We hope that you will see this as an opportunity to repair current divisions, develop trust between adults in charge and our youth, and offer a model program to impact the real long-lasting for the future leaders of our community and our world.
Pratik Raghun to be followed by our final speaker Denise Adams.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here, and thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Pratik Raghu. I'm a Global Studies PhD student, Chancellor's Fellow, and Teaching Assistant at the University of California, Santa Barbara. I'm here to encourage you to support this requirement as a person of color, a student, and a teacher. I know from personal experience just how alienating a limited education can be. Quite frankly, my British colonial education taught me to hate myself, and I don't wish that upon anyone else. I lacked an intellectual framework to connect the dots that I saw around me, the kind of framework that Ethnic Studies promises to provide. In college, I was able to reap the rewards of Ethnic Studies by engaging with Black feminism, Indigenous worldviews, queer theory, and world systems theory. All of these approaches are reflected in Ethnic Studies insofar as it is interdisciplinary, rigorous, and global in its scope. As an aspiring Global Studies scholar, I can tell you that this is a great way for students to engage the world. I've been able to see the benefits of Ethnic Studies among my feminist studies, Asian-American studies, and Global Studies students, all of them, white, non-white, of all genders. Seeing as someone else quoted Dr. King, I'll also do so. He once famously said that "Education plus character is the purpose of education," but the evidence of his own life also demonstrates that social transformation is a key part of learning. And Ethnic Studies Now is very much in his spirit.
Final speaker Denise Adams.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Denise Spangler-Adams. I've been a parent here, a person here for 39 years, active in schools for 26 years. I strongly support the opportunity to take Ethnic Studies. I'm against any mandate. As you all know, the governor vetoed a mandate of Assembly Bill 2772, so it is not mandatory for a high school graduation requirement. As all of you know, my children did take Ethnic Studies with Tony Jackson at Santa Barbara High, AP dual enrollment. I applaud Santa Barbara Unified because you were one of the first school districts to allow all students the opportunity to take Ethnic Studies. And I hope now that the governor has approved pilot programs, that you will expand the opportunity so it's not just dual enrollment AP Ethnic Studies, that it's available for all levels, but on an elective basis, because many students have different goals, whether it's music, athletics, STEM, mathematics. And we have a wonderful opportunity to make it available. I'm a firm supporter of academic identity uplifting, reducing the achievement gap by whatever it takes. But I hate mandates. I think that every student needs to decide a course of study of what they want. And I know my poor high school kids had to take 10 units every semester to be able to access places like MIT. And you want Ethnic Studies, but I'd like to see it be done on a voluntary basis. And again, I support the person who said, "Get the parents in it as well. Give us all an opportunity. Share your goal."
That concludes the speakers on the side.
Thank you for everyone's public comment. We appreciate it all, and also for emails and comments. And this process has gone forward for quite a long time, so we appreciate the ongoing voices of all of you here today and over the past three years. I'd like to turn over to Ms. Carey to sort of share a little bit more about this requirement.
Good evening, Dr. Reed and Members of the Board and community. I will just echo that as the district's representative, bringing forth this recommendation on behalf of the High School Graduation Requirements Committee, that I appreciate the voices and viewpoints throughout the many weeks and months of our process and years in some cases, because they have helped us to clarify the vision for the Ethnic Studies, the proposed Ethnic Studies graduation requirement. And I mean that about all voices and viewpoints. At past board meetings, specifically on June 12, and then on October 23, I brought you reports that articulated the rationale for proposing the incorporation of an Ethnic Studies graduation requirement. So I would just refer people to those reports if they have inquiries along those lines. And within that rationale, you will see expressed certainly sociological grounds, but I think something that's often overshadowed are both the pedagogical and psychological grounds and benefits conferred to all students. The research has shown us and experience has taught us, and as you've heard through anecdotes tonight and at prior board meetings, the benefits conferred by taking Ethnic Studies courses. So tonight, really, I'm just bringing before you the second reading for your action of the proposed amended Board Policy 6146.1, High School Graduation Requirements, and I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Board, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, and thank you for that one minor revision on the line in the Board policy. And I just want to say, how lucky am I that this is my last board meeting and this is up for action, right? I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the community for working so hard to bring this forward, and I thank you for your patience. I know that this has taken more time than some people would have liked, but to do it right, it took some time and communication and working things through. And so I want to particularly thank Ms. Carey and Board members and staff who participated with the Graduation Requirements Committee and members of the community that participated with that, because I feel that what's been worked out has a high likelihood of success. There was an article in the Atlantic Magazine from just a few years ago around Ethnic Studies Now. And as we have said before, and I'll quote from them, "Research shows that Ethnic Studies classes boost student attendance, GPAs, and high school credits." And it's because, I'll speak for myself, but I know that I can speak on behalf of this Board, we put students first. We want students to do well and to succeed into the future. And that is why, for me, it's critically important that we pass this Ethnic Studies requirement. And it needs to be for everybody. I'll quote Siobhan Brooks, a professor from Cal State Fullerton, in the article who says, "Ethnic Studies courses dispel myths and build connections among students rather than divisions." It's important for everybody. And so with that, certainly, I will support this moving forward. I'm very, very hopeful for the future. I see Ethnic Studies as a broad, inclusive umbrella of courses. Many are already available for dual enrollment through SBCC. And yes, parents and students should be involved as these courses are developed on our high school campuses as well. And I think this is just a tremendously positive step that we're taking. Thank you.
Mr. Perez Uyghur.
I'm not going to repeat myself too much tonight. To echo Ms. Parker, I too support the Ethnic Studies graduation requirement. And as I've said repeatedly over, I feel like, the last couple of years, whole history makes a whole person. A whole person creates a safer community. And that is one of, just one of the many benefits of bringing Ethnic Studies as a mandatory requirement. My lofty dream, and I look to the community and this Board and future Boards to make that into a reality, is really instituting the curriculum, the pedagogy of Ethnic Studies throughout every single piece of our pre-K through 12 system. As a history major, I've, you know, looking back now, I'm almost 40 years old, looking back on my own education, I've been deeply disappointed by the kind of history that we don't get taught. To really leave out so many of our population, to leave out our LGBTQ families, to leave out our indigenous families, our, you know, brown, red, white, whatever it is, to leave out so many people out of the story, out of the conversation is a dishonor to every single person who's come and gone. We just had Veterans Day, and you know what? So many of our veterans are, were queer, were straight, were brown, were white. And to be able to bring them back into the story just does them honor. And so I talk a lot about honoring our ancestors. This is honoring our ancestors, going all the way back to the beginning, going into the future. This is what we need to keep doing. We need to keep making a community that is strong, that is united by realizing who we are, talking about who we are, finding out who someone else is, and making sure that we feel safer. I really want to see that this Ethnic Studies requirement, you know, it's not a silver bullet, but I really do feel that this is going to come, bring us a lot closer to mitigating bullying, harassment, violence amongst ourselves. Because if we are secure and safe within ourselves, we will feel safe and secure with our community. And I can't think of one person who would be against a safer community, safer schools, and less bullying in our schools at all. So again, to the community, this is my last night as well. And as Ms. Parker said earlier this evening, I don't think I could have picked a better meeting to step off this Board, because this is a culmination of so many people's hard work. Favi, who's already gotten a shout-out, but she's getting another one right now, has just been so central to this work. And so have the rest of you, whether you've come to one meeting, bought a shirt, whatever it is, you are definitely part of this movement, and so are we. On this dais, in this district, in this administration, we are part of this movement. But what I'm going to ask my community to you again, and I will be down there with you starting next board meeting, is keep this Board and this district honest. Make sure that it is a requirement that is met with intentionality, that is met with community voice, that is met with real forethought. If we're not intentional with the things that we're teaching our students, then why are we in the business of education at all? So it is something that, from the bottom of my heart, is so important. And I hope to, you know, bring my own children someday, I'm sure they're out there somewhere, you know, into this district to make sure that when they come into the district, they don't have the same mental dissonance that I had growing up, trying to figure out who my descendants, who my antecedents were, who my ancestors were, and to figure out who I am and feel comfortable with myself in my community. And that's my honest, bottom-of-my-heart wish for this community, is that we all feel loved, we all feel supported, we all feel heard. And I think this is just step one. And again, we have a lot of work ahead of us. This is not, this is not end tonight. It continues on. And we need our community and we need our school district to partner in that work, or else it's all lost. So keep it up, folks.
Ms. Capps.
I, thank you. I just want to thank the students. When I was running for the School Board two-plus years ago, it was one of the first issues that came in front of me was this movement. And it was through a student who reached out through my nephew, who was then at Santa Barbara High. And I just, you know, what you've all done, you've been part of a movement, and that's really impressive. And it's, you've created a movement, and you've created this, your passion is so, so much on display. We've had many meetings about this. It's as though I know you all, and, you know, you're part of this, of this Board. And, but now it's the real work. And I think that's what's, I'm feeling tonight is the mirroring of a movement. And I think that's what's, what's, I'm feeling tonight is the mirroring of a movement now to a rigorous academic course that, and requirement, that is steeped in what we should be, the high expectations and the high requirements. And, you know, I was appreciative that a speaker mentioned that the, it's, it's not going to be a mandate yet by the state as we had, had expected, but you know what? We should be out in front. This is Santa Barbara. This is who, this is who we are. So to me, that's even more motivating than let's get this right so that other school districts can follow suit. Thank you.
Ms. Sims Morton.
Thank you. I just realized also, this would be my last shift to the right to say what they said in terms of, I don't want to repeat that. But I was just thinking about, not only is this a movement, but this is a shift in culture in the way we think, the way we have conversations going forward. I also think as we move forward, it's also, it will create this, you know, or eliminate the celebration of one day of a community, one month of a community. So it's a shift, it's a movement, and you're absolutely right, we do need to be out front of that. We need to take the lead in that, in terms of that. And I also think it creates the opportunity to do a conversation, to have a conversation. So when we know that we talk about one nation, then we know we can, because it's including everybody's history. Because I, I just think about it as an individual, some of us may be able to trace back for a little bit, but I can't tell you where I really came from. I can tell you where I was born. So this is really important to even know in the ethnic studies, to start that conversation, to want to have the courage to go back and find out where you actually came from. So this creates that conversation that is absolutely necessary. So I don't need to say any more other than I strongly support it, and I look forward to working, you know, making sure that this happens, making sure that it's at its highest level. And I also want to appreciate all the work, your voice on the ground, that's there, and also the work that this cabinet that's going forth as well.
So I want to thank all of the, all the board members on this dais for all of your sharing. And I also want to say that I was even before Fabi, I actually met Fabi in Ventura, when Ventura County was pushing for this movement. And so Fabi was involved prior to this, three years ago, but as well as Veronica Valdez. And I want to call out to her, because I was a part of those meetings. So to me, this has been something that's been very passionate and a part of everything that I believe in. I did want to just sort of speak a minute about, because I haven't really mentioned this, but in 1965, there were only 16 black students at UCSB. And at that time, they didn't feel that the gen ed courses reflected their, their livelihood, what they believed in, what their, what their, their history was. It was, it was, it was not even existent. And that led to many of the black students saying, this is not okay. And at similar time period at Berkeley, in 1968, another movement started to occur. And they joined in, into this movement and part of the civil rights movement to say, we exist and we need to be mirrored and reflected in the curriculum. And what happened was, that's almost 60 years ago. So what's amazing to me is that in higher ed, we made this change, but we haven't done anything in K-12. And here's our opportunity. It's taken 60 years for us to have this conversation, but it's about time. And so in order to build this, we need to start, like Mr. Ishmael Paredes Uyghur said, it starts at pre-K, it starts at home, but it begins this process that we must do, and we must do it over the course and not have to wait till we go to college, because not all students want to go to college or they have other career aspirations. So we need to ensure that these types of thinking, knowledge, cultural proficiency, understandings are there for students to have accessibility. And I want to say that we know that this is, as research states, does make a difference. I also want to state that the district is at the cutting edge. Of all the districts in the county, I mean, we're the lead district. What's wrong with being the lead district? I say nothing's wrong with being the lead district. I say that we are leading a force because of all of you. And again, I want to thank the power of the student voice. And I also want to thank the parents, and I do respect student voice, parent voice, teacher voice, administrative voice, everybody has to come together from all different factions. And they will. And I do know that with we on the board, we have the integrity to believe that this is not something we're just going to hand out and say, oh, next week we're going to do worksheet number five, it's on this topic. That's not what it's about. It's about going deep. It's about looking at all of these different perspectives, and it's about doing it the right way. And as Ms. Parker said, it took a while to get here, but by goodness, it's not going to go away. And if we want to make it sustainable, then we have to do it the correct way. And that means inclusion of all voices to look at us, to keep us on target, yes. And we want and we welcome your voices. So I do want to acknowledge Sean Carey for her passion and her drive, because she, she took the pedal to the metal and she stuck it and pushed it forward. And every time she could turn around and say, well, I just don't know, but then she kept going and said, this is, and she worked it out. I also wanted to call out Ann Rowdy. Thank you for all the support that you've brought. Again, Fabi, Sarah Bazan, and Kevin, gosh, I can't, Kevin McKee, on the graduations ethnic studies committee. So I'm going to be quiet, I'm going to stop. I think we all know where we're going here. So I'd like to turn to my board and ask the infamous question, do we have a motion here?
My last motion. I move to approve the updates and revisions of board policy 6146.1, High School Graduation Requirements, including the incorporation of ethnic studies as a graduation requirement.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. So, Mr. Dr. Beckio, if you could hold off on that. So this is a time that actually I would like to call up the members of the Chumash community to sing songs in solidarity for the ethnic studies graduation requirement as our five-minute transition into a break. Thank you.
Hi, Marcus Lopez here, Amaya Lopez, Marcus Lopez Sr. We're going to do, we want you to all sing along with us, especially you are singing as well. You know, like, you to join us as well. Kind of do like a little, like, kind of like Simon Says. Except we're not out to get you. This is the welcome song. And it kind of goes a little like this. Hee 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 onluwa.
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 Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. Hee 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 onluwa. It's really great to see all, see all of you here. I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, all the people who are in this room, that put so much work in, who are all over now in colleges from Canada to Massachusetts. So I think this next song is a song for healing and for our ancestors. Ipama chumawe. 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 Ipama chumawe.
We'll now take a five-minute break, and we'll be back. So I'd like to bring us back to order. To report discussion agenda, we'll start with report number one, and that will be on Santa Barbara Community Academy redesign for 2019-20. And we have Mr. Matsuoka, Dr. Ramirez, and Ms. Sharfeld.
I'll open.
And I'm not sure who's going to start first.
I will offer some opening comments, and then we'll turn this over to Ms. Sharfeld. And Dr. Ramirez is here also to provide some context and support. So I want to acknowledge the, the staff who's out there who have stayed, this is not beginning till 9:00 PM. And your presence is important. And we have been in a conversation, I would say, myself, Dr. Ramirez, and the school staff for about 18 months, if not longer. And I just want to express my gratitude to the team there who's really dived into a redesign. And Ms. Sharfeld has been in the role of principal now for about 15 months, 12 months? No, not even that long.
Not a year.
This year. Probably feels like it's been more than a year. To the, the board, I think you expressed to me your concerns and support for one of our smaller schools. And you asked us, as a staff, what can we do to support Santa Barbara Community Academy? And I just want to thank Ms. Sharfeld for her leadership. And what you're going to see tonight are ideas, but also vision. And at times, we've thought about, could this be the beginnings of different models in elementary education? The beauty of the size of the school, they're small enough, they can be really nimble. And they are already testing some of the ideas they, they have been working on, and I'm sure that's going to come out. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Sharfeld. She's got the slide deck, you've read through it. And off we go. Ms. Anna Sharfeld.
So I just want to thank you for having me come back and give you a little more information about what we've been doing and where we're going. So first of all, we really felt like we needed to start with what our mission is and our vision. And so we really looked at the Santa Barbara Unified new mission and vision statement, and really thought about, what is it that we need to do at the elementary level to support that mission and vision? And so we really believe that our, our mission is we grow learners, and that is our number one priority. And then it's really this notion of cultivating curiosity through connected and meaningful learning experiences. And that meaning, I mean, what we just saw earlier is pretty amazing. And so all of those meaningful experiences, how do we connect to our students and make it purposeful for them? So we also started the year with thinking about our core beliefs and our values, and then brought this to our students and asked them, what it, what does it mean to show respect, to improve, to solve problems, and really contribute to our school, ourselves as learners, and our community? So we started this process really thinking about, that we were looking at the school that was going to be based off of social, emotional learning, balanced literacy, and STEAM. And while those are still, those, we are still really focused on that, of course, balanced literacy, that is a number one priority for us. But our number, we're, we're really excited about the social, emotional learning component and the STEAM component, and really enhancing that. So that we're really focused on our students as whole children, and the social component, the emotional component, the academic, the creative, and the physical. And it really comes down to curiosity. Our, we, when we're, our kids are two, when they're three, they have so much curiosity about the world. And I've seen so many graphs, and I've unfortunately seen students at now elementary, junior high, and high school, and that every year you go up, that curiosity seems to diminish. And so we really feel like students have this, and it's our job to cultivate it so that they are continuing to be learners as they go into junior high, high school, and beyond. So we start out by thinking about the social, emotional learning. If you've ever heard Dr. Wagonit talk, it is the building blocks of everything. And so it is the building blocks. But, so we, I was introduced to Turnaround for Children, and they have these building blocks for learning. And recently at a conference, I met one of the, the head directors of that program, and I contact, I asked him about, well, these are these great building blocks. Our students are coming in with a lot of this, and we want to build from that so that they have this mindset for self in school, this perseverance, this academic tenacity, and leading up to that self-direction. And so how do we do that? There's these great building blocks, but what do we do? And so he's connected me to a principal at, in New York City. And so I've been, I'm talking with her about what, how she's used these building blocks to then bring that into her school. So we're also looking at some different social, emotional programs so that our teachers have a base. So they just need something to start from, and then we can grow with that. And then we have the academic and the creative. And when I'm talking about creativity, it's not just the arts, that's really important, but it's also creative thinking. And even in mathematics, we see creative thinking, and we need to give our students that opportunity. So, whoa. That's, that's not how it was in my slide deck. But, so, it's integrated. But, so, we have, we really are trying to create this integrated curriculum. And that takes a lot of time for teachers to do really well. It's easy to say, it's really hard to do. And it's really more about connections. How do we make connections for our students that is within the discipline and across disciplines? And so one of the ways that we're going to do this is through these universal themes. These are themes that we see in all of life, such as relationships, power, change, can't avoid change. So we start looking at generalizations and having students explore these different generalizations around that theme in all different subject areas. And then we come to, so that leads to this deeper learning. But I was like, how do we create time for this deep learning? Because when you Because when you get into a subject, you need time to think and process. You need time to collaborate, to communicate with others. But if we're constantly moving from one subject to the next, we don't have that time. We're not giving that enough time for our students that they need. So we're looking at, how do we create that time? And one way that, and for our teachers' time to build those really important integrated units. So we thought of this idea of this Core Week, Design Week, Core Week, Design Weeks. And the Core Weeks is really where the students are going to be learning about, learning how to read, write, integrating the arts, or supporting the learning of mathematics, of arts. As they go into their Design Week, they are now immersed in the STEAM, the engineering, the arts is what's driving, and they're applying the things that they're learning, and they're applying their reading, they're applying their writing, they're applying their mathematics. And then I was like, well, how do you do music? You can't do music, instrumental music, four times, you know, with a lot of depth in a short Design Week. So we were thinking, how can we create an extended day? Now, this is the part that our families are really excited about. It's also the part that I'm struggling with, how to really make feasible without adding more to my budget. But we would move, create an extended day, so it's an extra hour, which gives us more time with our students, and then they have that ability to have math, or sorry, music each week. And having them have a choice of the different types of instruments with singing as one of them. And our fourth through sixth grade would be combined. So I've looked at a lot of possibilities. I feel like every time I look at it, I get a little closer where it's not going to cost anything, then it's just finding the right people. But I, that's a part I still have some work on. So the STEAM component is happening in our Core Weeks, but it's really going into depth during our Design Week. And this is an example of one of our Design Weeks, or what it could look like, where they do a morning circle so that they're getting, and every day they're doing a morning circle. Then they're in this reading and math block, so they're still getting some reading and math. But then the majority of the day is this STEAM, this arts or science, technology, engineering block. So it's a very, and it's very focused on one theme for that week. In the middle on Wednesday, because that's our short day, is when they go on a community-connected experience. So in the primary grades, in the early grades, it's a field trip. And then as we get older, my hope is that we can connect with our community and see how can we support our local community and doing projects with them. So we are looking at the design thinking process, and we're really focused on using the engineering as elementary design thinking in our kindergarten through fourth grade, transitioning to the model via the Stanford Design School where it really adds the empathy component, so that students are really starting to think about, how do we empathize with that end user? And so here's an example. This is, we prototyped our Design Week with our first grade. And so here's a short, one-minute video of them, if it works. We'll see. No. Do, is there a place to, I don't know why. Can you click on it? Not there. Okay, okay. Yeah. Oh, there we go. Sorry. So it was pretty successful for our first week. And then, lastly, we just, we do, are incorporating the physical, so we have PE. This year, we started dance with our third graders. I would love to figure out how we can get that as the second PE time, because there's so much that kids learn through controlling their bodies and just expressing themselves. And then, lastly, we are on social media now, so you can follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, or Twitter. And I've worked on our website, so we're trying to get the word out that we are there. And we have an open house on December 6th, so that's where we are right now.
One more slide.
Is there?
Yeah, it's it.
Oh, right. And that didn't line up well, but we grow learners. It looked much better. So, there we go.
Thank you very much. What's exciting is to hear, to see the excitement and the passion that you share with us as you share this new redesign. So I'm going to turn it over to our board for any questions and comments. Ms. Parker?
Thank you. And I want to thank you and the staff at Santa Barbara Community Academy and the current families that are there for being willing to embrace change and really reinvent a school. I mean, the school was originally designed very specifically as a core knowledge school, as a downtown school. And it needed to be reinvented when some of those things changed, right? And it's hard for a school that is experiencing declining enrollment to make that change. I appreciate this. And it's a question of keeping at it and then hoping, right, that you're doing the kind of outreach and building a school that families will want to come to. So keep up the good work on that. I do have a couple of questions around it. And one is that some things that are, that have been the practice in the past have been year-round calendar, is that something that would change? And I don't know if this is a Dr. Ramirez question. And then uniforms, is that something that would change? And how much have current parents been involved with this process? Those are my questions.
So.
I'm going to do the calendar.
Uniforms, we will continue with. I'll let him talk about the year-round calendar. And then the parents, every, I have a coffee monthly for parents, and I have brought this, been talking about this at every coffee, and then shared it with our ELAC committee last week. And so that's, so that's where I'm just trying to get their ideas and what they're thinking through those coffees, and then our ELAC, which is our most powerful group on campus.
Hi, good evening, board. To the question of the year-round calendar, that's something that really started a starting point for us in our discussion. It's somewhere where the staff has, at this point, been in support now of moving toward a traditional calendar. That has been messaged broadly to the parents, because it was important for them to understand as early as possible that change was afoot and with enough lead notification. There's still some logistics and details that we need to work out, but we are confident in that we will be moving forward with a traditional calendar for the 1920 school year.
All right, Ms. Capps.
Thank you. This is exciting, and I really just appreciate the clear clarity, the clarity of the presentation and just how much it kind of is compelling and speaks to someone who might be a parent thinking, is this a good school for my child? So thank you. My question is really about outreach, and you mentioned the open house, but if you could speak a little bit to that, because I know that's often, I mean, it's such a challenge when you're starting something new, and we want to make sure that then we get off to as strong a start as possible. And I know that's front and center probably on your priorities, but if you could spend a little time thinking about that, and specifically just any outreach that might be happening with the open alternative community. Thanks.
So we are starting the parent outreach part and really started, we had to get on social media, so that was my first, got, did that last weekend. And so we're there, we're building, we're building, so we need your help. And then I think my, that's where I'm trying to figure it. I'm trying to figure that out. We were going to go walk the neighborhood last Friday. We changed our plan and did some other things instead, but it's things like that, trying to connect with different preschools, trying to just kind of get out where kids are that have, like, that are four years old. And I'm still trying to figure where they hang out, because I don't happen to have any four-year-old friends. But that's the, that's the work that we are trying to figure out right now. And so I don't have any great answers, other than I'll take any advice that you have.
Okay. Well, since you asked, I think it would be important to specifically reach out to the open alternative families, who we all know who they are, and, you know, if any assistance is needed in that regard, I can certainly help, but probably others have better connections. Just again, given the synergies of what this vision is, and also given the fact that that school was closed and that community is so tight-knit, and looking for something, was looking for sort of what might be next. So I would, I think that that's a wise place to start. Thanks.
If I may make a comment also along the lines of outreach, I think it was really important for there to be really two things that come together. One was a coherent vision for a design, a redesign of a school. As you mentioned, change, particularly after a really longstanding set of practices, is challenging. I really want to commend the staff. Many, obviously many of them are here, but also those who aren't here tonight, because they have, they have really embraced it. It really has been a credit to their efforts. They took many of the things that we've moved forward with over the past few years as a district and really just connected them. And Ms. Scharfeld's influence is certainly evident here, but the work of the staff is incredible, particularly in the realm of the flexible thinking around time. That's something that, if before we're through, I'd like to just come back to. But that was a very important piece, because now it provides a proof point for families that may want to see the school. And so we talked about this some time ago, and again, speaks to the staff, speaks to the leadership, and to the parents who supported, that they now have something to really offer parents, prospective parents, parents who may want to come in and visit. So now what this allows us to do also is, you know, look at, for example, our kindergarten readiness network, partnerships that exist with our preschool space, to be able to afford a Ms. Scharfeld, perhaps the teaching staff opportunities, to come before them or to engage with that group more fully with more clear plans in place that allow them to have a, not just an imagination, but a real, a real point of evidence of what is being suggested. So now I think that exists, and I'm, we just had this conversation recently about how I'm excited to also support in that endeavor.
Yes. Ms. Parker?
Yeah. I wanted to follow up on a couple of points. One is, I do want to be cautious about outreach to open alternative families, because while pieces of this match that progressive education style that may be attracted to some, it, many pieces of this are not progressive. And I, I don't think that this is a replacement for us looking at creating a truly progressive program at an existing site. And so I want to be cautious that they don't get the message that, oh, this is instead of, because there is a need for that in the district, and something that is not this, probably quite this type of blend. And so I want to be cautious about that, that we're not saying, oh, look, you know, Community Academy is doing this and we're done, because I don't think that we are. I just also wanted to touch back on the extended day. I mean, the reality is extended day is people, is hiring people, and it costs more money. And so I'm, I know that this can't cost more money than any of our other sites, and so I, I hope that you're able to figure that out in a way that makes sense. We did all get an email from your music teacher assuring a member of the public that, because the way the design looks up there, it looks like only fourth through sixth is getting music, and then it's only happening after school. And so your music teacher was really assuring the public that, in fact, that is not the case. So I wanted to be sure to mention that now as well.
Yes. I'm not trying to get rid of music. I played music in school. My sister was the drum major at Santa Barbara High School, so that's important. But it's really just, how do we create something and create more time so that our students are getting everything that they need? And so I have some shifts in, how do you take personnel and shift their schedules so that they're not all starting at the same time? And so that's one way to create that extra time after school. There's still a few little components. I had it, and then I was, you know, that's how designing is. You think you have it, and then you got to change it a bit. But, yeah, so I do understand that. And I'm trying to not add more money.
And Ms. Parker, if I could offer up just a thought on that to my earlier comment. Some time ago, we, I presented to the board a discussion around instructional minutes in the elementary space. And I think what you see here is, I purposely left that open, because there wasn't, there isn't a prescriptive answer to how you deal with competencies and standards and the challenges of instructional minutes as they are. But what this is expressing to us is that there are ways to work through that. And integration, as Ms. Scharfeld indicated, it's easy to say, very, very difficult to do, and very much a part of collaborative inquiry and really commitments. And so to commend again the staff that were open to those shifts, that were open to just experimenting a bit differently. But to your core question, you know, the values are there, and we will continue to support the arts in our elementary schools as we have in the past.
I just want to.
Ms. Capps?
Yeah, I appreciate the distinction. And not to suggest that this is the next open alternative, but I do think that, A, that network is very networked. And so if you're trying to do outreach, just from a practical matter, it's a tight-knit group of people. Secondly, a couple of families that were at Open Alternative are at the school where my son goes, and I know that they just felt a little, you know, displaced. And so I just think it's important to say, hey, we do have this option to people who might be feeling that, and might be feeling that Roosevelt is a big campus compared to where they were, and this might be a nice option. So I just, just again, just wanted to clarify that I don't, don't sort of think it's all the same, and, but I do think that that would just be a smart thing and something I feel like we owe them to just continue the dialogue of new options in the district. Thanks.
You can't sit down yet. So I think it's really exciting. I love the integrating, the integrating piece, and I really am thrilled that you're all jumping on board to do that. And it is difficult. So I feel like it's so important that we're providing from the district professional development and support for staff and time to be able to do the work. It's one thing to say, we're being innovative and we're integrating, but then it's like, but how do we do it? You know, or what, what support are we getting? So I just want to ensure that they're getting the support they need as a staff. And what does that look like in terms of practical application? How is that support happening? And just to speak to you also, Dr. Ramirez, is that what type of support can the district can be providing around messaging and getting the word out? Because I know they're working really hard to do everything that they're doing. I mean, the idea of walking the street sounds great, but who has time for that? the idea of walking the street sounds great, but who has time for that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it sounded like a good idea, but I mean, are you gonna have a flag and balloons and say, you know, come to this school? I think there needs to be a strategy, and a strategized plan, that is, you know, a process of getting the word out and showing how great this work is. I mean, this is amazing. So, to, how, what kind of practical steps can the district do to support that? Or is there a plan in place? So, I'm gonna turn to Dr. Ramirez first.
So, in terms of a, of a plan being in place, I think one, the best that I can offer you at this moment is that one is emerging. There are some captive audiences that we can certainly outreach to. I mentioned the kindergarten readiness network. That is a group of, of leaders in their own right here in, in, in our preschools, and our, and our, and the preschools that serve, serve up their children to our TKK programs. That is an incredible group of people, that, that actually is very influential, because they, they connect with parents, they connect with families, and families rely on their opinion about, about our schools. So, that to me, sounds like a, a good place to start. Beyond that, I, I think that there does need to be an element of grassroots campaigning, if you will. And what, what I mean by that is, that we also know that many of our families who do attend SBCA do come from the local community. They view that as a community school. So, I think there are some captive audiences there that can certainly benefit from understanding what the redesign entails, just to, because we have families in our, in our current, in, at SBCA, who have younger children that are coming in, and that are looking for those opportunities to, to stay on board, and they, they want to stay at their school. So, so, that's what I would offer up first. Again, now that we have a vision in place, now that we have some materials emerging, some proof points to be able to point to families and invite them in, I think that that's, that's, that's a big help, that we can then talk about how to, how to support in, in the appropriate way, as, as, as district leaders, and clearing a path for Ms. Scharfeld. Now, to the question of professional learning, the professional learning that, that has been offered is similar in scope and, and support, as with many of our other elementary schools. Now that we're at this juncture, if there needs to be a different iteration, I mean, we've talked about some different expressions of time, or whatever it is, that we might need to provide, whether it's release time, or some more specific and targeted professional learning, I, I think that's a, a question that, that I still would, or a set of strategies that I would offer up, that, that the school really needs to grapple with, and that we would certainly be in support of, whether it means rerouting some existing opportunities, or creating new ones. I think there is an opportunity to be had on both fronts.
So, the, the deal, the, the plan is to really try to get, I mean, there's a key timeframe. We're limited in this key timeframe. What is that timeframe again?
So, the open enrollment period begins December 3rd, hence our high school showcase coming up in two weeks. The kindergarten enrollment begins during that time, but because these are usually new families, we, we expect the kindergarten enrollment will show up starting in January. We'll get some preliminary numbers, but it really takes until, what, April, before we really have a sense of kindergarten enrollment. So, I think we'll have some ideas about numbers at the end of January, when open enrollment closes. But, it's really, we have to be patient with the whole kindergarten registration process.
So, are there best practices that are used at other districts for new opening schools that might be incorporated in this process?
You want me to step into this?
No, no, it's okay. You know, best practices, I think, I think you've already seen them. You know, the fact that, that there was a vision that came, came around this quickly and this sharply, is really the work of that, of Ms. Scharfeld with that staff, because they took building blocks that, some of, some of which already existed in our elementary space, and retooled those, and really integrated them into something that was comprehensible. When, when I saw this presentation, it really was comprehensible to me, even as a parent myself. And one of the things that, you know, you, you can't go out and message something that, that doesn't fully exist, and that doesn't fully articulate. So, I think that was a big, big first step, probably the most important first step, is what are we inviting parents to come be a part of? And now that we're here, I think, you know, I will defer back to some of those steps that, that I articulated previously. Having come from a charter background, I can, I can also tell you that there is no better place than connecting in the community where people live, where people congregate, to be able to reach them with the right, you know, tools to convey information to them, in ways that are accessible. And so, again, the fact that we did that analysis, and, and identified that the vast majority of families come from our neighborhood, I think that there's, there's a captive audience there to be had, and there is a captive audience there to be reached out to, that may be very interested in this already. So, you know, I wish I had a, a magic set of, of strategies. I think some of them will emerge. The social media presence is also very important, because our, our families now communicate in very different ways than they did even a few years ago. So, their access and the reach that, that, that media, social media has, is, is really important. Along the way, I'll make sure to reach out to some, some programs and colleagues that I have in other districts, to see what other opportunities may exist for us to be able to message along the way.
Well, thank you. I just, I think it's really important that it, it is innovative, it's exciting, it's amazing what you've all been able to put together in such a short period of time. And this visual, as well as your passion, and I'm sure, I haven't heard yours, but I've been hearing hers more than yours, but I see that you're here, and you're excited, and you're passionate. But, I, I, and now that Dr. Ramirez says we have something to unfold, I just want to make sure that we don't drop the ball, and that you are getting the support you need to get the word out, and to ensure that we did all of this work, let's make it happen, right? Because it is exciting. I also wanted to speak to also the OAS school. I do think that we can outreach to as many families, you know, the OAS families that are, that perhaps might be interested, but they at least should know about it. And I, I think it's something, though it isn't a perfect fit, it is an opportunity. And the, the other thing I wanted to say also is the music piece, it's not really transparent in this document. So, I would think that if you're talking about art and PE, that, and you are working to redesign and make sure it's part of that, that there might be something, a way that you can make that more transparent in your, in your presentation, so that there isn't that question, that it's, this is, this is all integrated together. Did you have something?
Yeah, just wanted to add, as you are developing, thank you, as you're developing your outreach plan, I would like to have first five included in that. And we have a pulse on a lot of preschoolers, and a lot of families. So, to offer that up, we're looking to strengthen our partnership with schools. We start out early, so we would, we can reach over five, six thousand of families, in terms of that. So, include us in that. I know we don't have time to, to talk about today, but I want to offer that as a resource.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, the more, we'll think about it, but we're together. You can't sit down, yes you can. Thank you. No, you can. Thank you very much. So, we're moving forward to H2, First Reading slash Sunshining of the California School Employees Association for Successor Contract Negotiations with Santa Barbara Unified School District. Dr. Beckio.
Okay, now that I've got the hang of the technology, just to add some clarity, the public hearing was, not sure if it was presented this way, but the public hearing was Santa Barbara Unified's sunshining of our proposals for both SPTA and CSEA. So, adding clarity there. This is indeed the first reading of the CSEA's sunshining of their proposals to negotiate with Santa Barbara Unified. You'll notice the items there are wages and health benefits, disciplinary action and appeal, and classification and reclassification. And I'll bring these back to second reading at the next board meeting. We'll go for the third reading in January, and be ready to negotiate in January.
Do you have any questions, or? All right. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. We'll now move to Report Discussion Agenda Item Number Three, Report on Adams Elementary School Site Development. We do have a public comment that we'll start with first.
Yes, Daniel Brooks, he's still here. Okay, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. President Reed, members of the board. My name is Dan Brooks. I'm a parent, and a PTA board member at Adams Elementary. On behalf of our parents, students, and teachers, several of whom are here tonight, I'm here to express strong support for the, the plan, and Mr. Vizalini's staff report, and appreciation for the district reconsidering and accelerating the schedule for replacing the, the playground pavement. I respectfully disagree with the opinion that the condition is not that bad. In the six weeks since our PTA president Allison Bell addressed you, students have suffered one broken arm, one concussion, several dozen scrapes requiring medical attention from staff as a result of slips and falls in the degraded pavement. But, we're pleased to see that the schedule's going to be accelerated. For the second part of the plan, we're also excited at the prospect of the district replacing a condemned building and several portable classrooms with new permanent classrooms. The new and added space will help accommodate Adams enrollment, which went up by about fifty students, or, or ten percent this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. So, Mr. Vizalini?
Good evening. So, I just wanted to offer a brief report on site development for Adams School. So, as you know, the original plan, well, as you don't know, so our original plan was to do the portable replacements first. And the logic behind that was that resurfacing the playground ahead of time was gonna damage it in all likelihood by putting heavy equipment and vehicles, and work trucks, and everything else on this pavement. So, as we've just heard, and that we heard as, at a previous meeting, that, you know, the Adams community is very concerned about that. I had not heard recently about the, what was just reported now. So, we have developed a different plan, and I'll amend my, my comments here by saying that with the latest information, we'll meet over there and take a look at short-term mitigation to try and make it better. So, we've, we've, we just passed our, approved a, an agenda item with Flowers and Associates. They've offered to do to help us figure out how to do some point repair with our own folks. So, they'll actually meet out at the school, and show them the right way to do it, so we'll mitigate those problems in the short term. So, while we were working on this, while we were working on our site plan, we found that in order to accommodate this new change, we had to rethink how we were gonna handle that at the school. So, the original design of the school was two kindergarten classrooms, okay? So, as was pointed out, the enrollment at Adams has gone quite high, and there are actually one hundred and twenty-five TK and K students, which is, which equates to five kindergarten classrooms. What we found in our research at some of our elementary schools is that we have several kindergarten classes that are not in kindergarten-sized classrooms, that are appropriately sized with restroom facilities. So, we started looking at what could we do to build those spaces with some of our portable replacement money. And that's when we discovered, oops, I'm going the wrong way, pardon me. We discovered AB 1808, which has just recently been passed by the Assembly. It's a hundred million dollar program where the, the, funds are gonna be, sorry, funds will be allocated to schools that have full-time classroom, full-time kindergarten in undersized spaces. The funding will be given out in two rounds. Thirty-seven point five million will be eligible in the first month, which is January of 2019, sixty million more in May of 2019. It's a fifty-fifty match, so districts have to have funding available, so we're in good position there, because we have bond money to deal with that. The requirement is that you do have to have those classes in smaller rooms. So, we do have those qualified. In fact, we think that potentially up to fourteen classrooms could be constructed in our district, in the elementary district, obviously, where we have classrooms that are undersized. So, this is our, kind of our first pass at our design. So, if you look at the shaded spaces, you have in the corner kind of an L-shaped building. There are currently three undersized classrooms now. There are two child development, child development classes, and a kindergarten class down there. And our thought is that for short-term housing, we take a look at the old library building. We go inside, we do whatever's necessary to make them presentable for very short-term temporary housing, so we don't have to bring more buildings onto the school. We take down the old buildings, construct three full-size kindergarten classrooms, which is very beneficial, because if you're familiar with this area, it's fenced in, they have their own playfield, they have their own play structure, they will have their own restrooms, and the other kindergartens are already up here. So, they're all in very close proximity. When that building is done, we would move these folks back out into the new classrooms, remove these four classrooms, and construct the new four-classroom building, which would be standard classrooms. So, we'll, so we'll have to do the work in phases. Like I said, we'll do it in, in that order. The good news is, is that that moves the asphalt up to this summer. So, we have the architect in place now. We're actually meeting on campus on Friday morning with Kelly Fresh to take a look at original, you know, concept designs, striping plans, and we'll also take a look at some of the damage that's been reported tonight, and see what can be done to mitigate that in the short term. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All righty. Ms. Parker?
I also love that Adams is on the agenda tonight. I'm just sorry, this is, this is one of my perfect meetings, right? Thank you. And I, I, I want to circle back to the consent agenda item, on re, on reworking the asphalt there, the summer project, because I had not fully appreciated until I read that, that while, like, the, the design work that we passed today costs a relatively small amount of money, the budget for, for redoing that asphalt is about a million dollars. And so, when I saw that, I realized then, okay, oh, that's why the district is trying, I mean, it's a huge investment there, and it needs that work. And that's why the district was trying to be so careful about making sure that they didn't spend a million now, and then ruin it, right?
Exactly.
And so, I appreciate, I'm, you know, I'm grateful for the legislature for having this money possibly available to us. I do hope that we move forward with it, even if we can't get the matching funds. But, I very much hope that, that we're a good fit for that program. I mean, that would be terrific. When, that would probably take a couple of years to go through DSA. Is that what you would, you would guesstimate in terms of a timeline for starting this?
I would say so, yeah, because we do need CD approval letters, and, and DSA-approved drawings, but there's a process. So, the applications will be in January. That, that January timeframe is actually when they're accepting applications. So, we've, we're already compiling the data. We've been working with school facilities consultants, and so we have the enrollment necessary, we have the site maps together that show what classrooms they are in, which ones are undersized. So, we'll have our packages together well before January, and we're gonna submit for all of them.
So, one question I have is, at Adams, would those continue to be preschool classrooms in, in the future?
They will be full-size kindergarten classrooms. So, I would, I would say that's probably a site administrator decision, but, but I think that it would be appropriate to put kindergartners in there, because that's, that's the requirement of Title V.
Okay. And then, the last question I have is, there are a lot of portables then still out to the north side of the campus, and, or northwest, however you want to look at it. How, northeast, I can do it. How, how would that play out in the future, in terms of redoing those portables, removing those portables?
I think it has to do with enrollment. First of all, we'd have to take a look at, after we're done, you know, they're gonna be gaining four classrooms, right? The old library space is four classrooms that aren't being utilized right now at Adams. So, in my mind, that would give us an opportunity to remove four of the oldest portables, and maybe we'd take a look at reconfiguring, maybe it gives them a little more playground space, maybe the garden expands. There's some thoughts about that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sims-Mottin?
So, just to follow up on the preschool, is there a preschool on that side right now?
Yes.
So, where are they going?
They are, they will, well, they will be moving into one of the library classrooms. They're not getting moved off the campus.
Okay. That wasn't clear, so I just had to make sure.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
And the second question, with a gosh to match, so it has to be a 50/50 match. So, would maybe we allocate any of our funds to meet that, that new funding coming in, or is it just because we have ready, you know, because we have the funds and the bonds we're able to?
We do. We have, we have money for, I believe, it's seven or eight portables at Adams School, so that's the money we would be using to match with. We actually save money on the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we always like to hear "save money on the construction." Thank you, Mr. Vizelini. Moving forward to report number four, report on staffing proposals. Dr. Beckio, you're just doing everything tonight.
Okay. I blew my opportunity to get, ever get to do technology again, but I deserve it, since I was making fun of Meg earlier. Anyways, on this side is really a three-pronged approach. We've put in front of you some proposals for reinvesting in, in our services to students, and you'll see in the proposal, we've given you attachments for management, ideas around management, classified positions, and certificated. And so, just for the public's benefit, I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes, just giving an overview of those, although you do have the background information in your packet. I wanted to start with the elementary assistant principals. This is a, an opportunity to invest in, in management in a place that we think is critically needed. We have, the background on that is we have one administrator running a school, and that is it. And so, often those administrators are pulled off, the principal of the elementaries are pulled off to, to meetings, and we're really left with no administrator, instead a teacher on, a teacher-in-charge type system. And so, this proposal is, is to hire for elementary assistant principals. We would split them among eight schools, and you see the job description there. It gives you some of the duties that an elementary assistant principal would engage in. If you turn, and I'll come back, and we'll open it up to questions at the end, so let me go through the classified positions, which are next. You have junior highs, junior high school secretary. This really came about because over the years, we do, we have our counseling secretaries who are serving as, you know, registering students for school, verifying address, et cetera. And that really is work that happens throughout the summer, and so this proposal is to take those employees to a 12-month position. And then, if you go to the next item, which is a roving gardeners, this is a proposal to add a roving gardener at the junior high level, well, well, actually for three of the four junior highs. This position would allow for a rotation of a, of a, a second gardener to be at a junior high campus for one week. The next week, they'd go to the other campus. The, that campus would have the two gardeners for that week. Really would allow for some of the projects that need to happen on these campuses to happen. They're bigger projects, weeding large areas, doing a whole fence line, stuff that takes hours to do, and, and the gardeners at the junior high have other duties throughout the day, places they have to be just by virtue of the fact of the student's schedule, the lunches, picking up trash during lunch, et cetera. And it also is a proposal to add a gardener for, to rove between San Marcos and Dos Pueblos, and so they do have the extra help there every other week, if that's the rotation that they go on, and to formalize the extra gardening between Santa Barbara High's crew and Santa Barbara Junior High. So, what I did is I put a chart in there for you to see how it would equalize out the distribution of man-hours, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. Human Resources, Senior Office Assistant, this was a position that was rolled back a couple of years ago, I believe it was, during kind of some tighter budget times. And so, we've actually been employing, this is a rather cost-neutral item, it may add about 10,000 or so to the budget, but we currently are probably spending roughly 30,000 for temporary clerical support work in that office. And so, this is a proposal to bring back that position to provide us some clerical support with some of the interview protocols and, and services that we want to render out of the HR department. I think this would be a valuable resource for us to reestablish. The LVNs, this proposal is to take, we have about eight LVNs, and this would be to take the, actually, two actions. One is to take the LVNs from a range 38 to 48, and then create an LVN2 position, which is a higher-level position, which is for more of the, the services that are provided to medically fragile students, et cetera. So, that is, I think, seven, eight of the incumbents, yes, would be going from 38 to 48, staying at an LVN position, and then one would, would increase to an LVN2.
Can you just say what LVN is, please?
Yeah, it's a licensed vocational nurse.
Thank you.
And the, the way it currently works is we have health office assistants, we have LVNs, we have health office assistants and we have LVNs. Some of our sites have the LVN serving in, in that health office, and then others have a health office assistant. Then we have LVNs that are serving individual students and some, some of their more critical health needs, usually through the IP process, et cetera. So, those are the ones where that role, and for us to be competitive really with the market, we, we need to create a position that recognizes they're doing something beyond the work that happens in a health office. And then, the final classified position is the clinical outreach, or clinically-youth outreach service provider. The current outreach coordinator position, what we are finding is that that lacks the actual qualifications that are needed for the complex services that are, that are needed in that space for, to provide services to the students, mostly in the area of our homeless students or Title I students. And so, this proposal would create that new position with higher qualifications. And then, the final summary of costs shows you for just classified, that's the total increase roughly, again, taking into consideration that we currently are spending roughly $30,000 a year on the human resources position, so. And then, the last item is certificated positions, which the investment there is making an investment in the junior high seven periods, and, and really adding, adding seven-period options in our junior high schools and expanding those so that students who are taking double periods of, of English Language Arts or Math support are still able to access some of the elective offerings, and so we can expand those elective offerings into seven-period day. And then, the class size reduction for strategic areas, this is really to allow us some flexibility. I think it said roughly, was it 10 sections, to, to actually have the flexibility so where we see that we have master schedules that are impact, impacted in certain specific areas. Let's say as English Language Arts, we're running 36, 37 students in a class at the high school level, that we would want to be able to infuse an extra section in there to lower those class sizes down. And so, taking a look across our secondaries at, at where we might be able to lower class size with that extra staffing allocation. That, that price tag on both of those was roughly a million dollars. And so, the total fiscal impact for all three of these, both the management classified and certificated, was roughly 1.8 million.
Let me add clarification on the seventh-period offerings. That actually will be used in both junior high and senior high. I mean, we have issues, you know, grade seven through 12, so just know that we'll, we'll figure out the, I guess, the tightest spots and start offering limited seventh-period options for some students. And I know that leads to a whole bunch of questions about who and what. We've got a really robust system now of analyzing our staffing ratios in our junior and senior high, especially the senior highs because they're such large master schedules. And so, you know, the issues that have come to, to us at board meetings around access to seven-period days, it's, it's one of our biggest needs, and it's also one of the most expensive challenges to respond to. For some of us who've been in the community, like, I, I ask around, like, when did seventh-period go away? And I get different stories, but I think it was the early 90s. Was it?
No, it was a lot later than that. It was early 2000s, I think.
Early 2000s? So, 15 years ago. So, you know, whatever budget environment happened then, but it's a long time. And I think you can, it doesn't take much to understand a seventh-period day is, it's, it's a big, big opportunity for kids to take classes. I mean, the approval of the ethnic studies graduation requirement, along with other things, is, is just going to create some pressure points. So, we believe we need to start making some investments. We'll have a lot of work to do in secondary staffing meetings, but Ms. Carey and I are, you know, prepared to sort of work through the nuances with the principals. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Parker?
I, I appreciate this whole plan, and I think that it's really positive in many ways. I, I hope that SBTA and CACA are part of conversations with what we're proposing here for classified and certificated staff in the secondary district. My, and I think these are really great ideas. I think that they're all really great ideas. My concern is in the elementary space. When we're talking in the secondary space, the investment really is at the, is at the class level, and I think that that's a message that will resonate well with our communities, with our families. And while I completely see the need at the elementary level for this type of administrative support, I also know that from the early 2000s, we've dramatically increased class size at the elementary level. We lost site librarians. We want to do things like create maker environments at our schools. And so, I think if we have the funding to be able to put this together, that we need to be thinking a little bit more holistically of the elementary space as well. And so, that would be my caution in moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Capps?
Yeah, thank you for this. I, let's see, I just am curious too if this is sort of, if this is in addition, or there are actually cuts that you're thinking about later, because it is, you know, it's a big price tag. And so, I, I would want to have a report that's holistic and not just, oh, this is exciting to add these new positions, but this means we're going to be having to tighten elsewhere. So, that's my primary question.
I will offer a preliminary response. Mr. Tej is at a conference tonight. We, we have, I would say, once a month, we are looking at the budget for this year. We wouldn't bring you these ideas if, if it meant cuts somewhere else. So, these are additions to the budget for next year, that we believe there is the financial space in our budget to do this. And I think to the question, what we could do is, the first interim is coming to the next board meeting, although we're going to have, you know, two new board members that have to make sense of the budget. We'd be prepared to show you a scenario, you know, without, with it. It, actually, I think we could show the scenario with it to see, is it financially responsible? We believe it is. There's some information that's come forward about our income this year that is really positive. It's part of this transition into being a basic aid school district. So, know that we are recommending this, but it's not going to involve cuts somewhere else to make it happen.
Well, that's certainly music to my ears. As I was reading this over the weekend, I just thought, is this, is there another shoe to drop with this? But more specifically on elementary, I certainly see the need firsthand of assistant principals, so, but I do also hear a lot from parents about class sizes, especially in the kindergarten, as, as Dr. Mares knows, you know, kindergarten grades. So, I do, I do want to just add my experience with what Ms. Parker has raised. Another point too, when, when we went over the CASP scores, a real big takeaway for me was when you all presented that certain schools are partnering and sharing dialogue, certainly schools that are excelling more than others in terms of academic outcomes. And so, again, this is not for me to say, but when I read that, that the assistant principals, at least in this vision, would be sharing time, it, it occurred to me that that might be an opportunity to create that sort of partnership even, even more directly. So, I would just offer up that maybe that might be something to think about, but again, that's your call. And yeah, that's, those are my two, two sort of reference points on elementary. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just going to say, the, I get back to, I keep finding, is it the practical application of when this would be rolled out? I think it's exciting. I think it's very, but I'm just curious, you're sharing this, and then when is all this going to happen?
Well, practically speaking, that'd be for the following school year on, on most of these items, simply because, for example, master scheduling and staffing and hiring assistant principals would, would take us through the spring and into next year's budget space.
Will we be provided with transparency as to the process, I guess, is what I would, because we've been brought, just to say that we've had other positions brought forward to us that we discussed, and then some of them we haven't heard about again. So, I just want to make sure that we, the dots are connected, and we know when are these going to actually happen and take place.
Yeah, we most certainly can do that, and this is really the first step, and that is giving you, really sunshining these, these ideas to you tonight.
And I do agree with what Ms. Capps has to say. They have assistant principals, I think, are going to be so helpful for the elementary schools, and the idea of providing an opportunity for those connections between the schools. And I think that's a really good way to start looking at it. I think, I also wanted to just ask about the, like, the junior high secretaries, and can, are they going to be involved in connecting with and engaging with the community? Because one of the things that we noticed too is just what sort of engagement can, if we have, if we bring on new staff, that they could be a part of really reaching out and engaging with the community when they come in and they need someone that has, speaks, you know, Spanish so that they have the translation opportunities, that, that they can connect with the, with the parents in these different schools.
Well, these are, just to be clear, these are existing positions. So, we have, we're just increasing their time. I believe one of them is already a 12-month employee. The other three are, I believe they're 11-month employees, so it's, it's increasing those three by one month. And so, you know, their job by virtue of the fact that they are there in the summer and families come in all summer, they're engaging in that respect. They're not necessarily, as would be our family outreach workers and things like that. They're not out in the community, but they are in the office receiving services, or providing services to the folks that walk into the offices.
Thank you. I just want to say that the idea of seven periods is exciting because we really need that opportunity. So, I, I believe that we're heading in the right direction. I appreciate the leadership on that. And the idea of smaller class sizes, it's a no-brainer. So, I think this is all exciting, just to continue, just providing us with the information as we go along and through the process. Yes, Mr. Perettas Uyua.
Thank you. So, a few questions. The clinical youth outreach service provider, as you've pointed out, you've already got a, a youth outreach provider position. You've got two, actually. You've got for, for male and female students. Is this in addition to, is this replacing, is this augmenting that position?
This would be replacing.
It would be replacing. Okay.
So, I did put in the narrative that we would be, we would actually be eliminating that position if the current, the current person that occupies that position would be qualified to apply for this new position. If, one scenario would be if that person were to be chosen and hired, we would eliminate, we would eliminate her position. If that person is not provided, actually selected for the position, then we would need to lay off that position.
And so, this would only be for serving the female students, but not the male students?
Correct.
Okay. Are we, are we thinking about going that way? Just because I, I see a lot of value in, in having someone Just because I, I see a lot of value in, in having someone with a clinical background working with our students, with so many adverse childhood experiences, with different barriers to just education, so many difficulties, you know, a lot of our young students. I know the person who currently holds the position, no offense to him, but, you know, having that clinical background, I think, would be huge in, in working with those students.
I would, I, just on that question, I'd defer to Dr. Wagonak.
The quick, the quick answer is yes, but we were actually able to identify some ongoing money and made a decision to start with the young women. We do know that we have a, first of all, looking at the data and seeing the money is specifically for students who are homeless, and within that case, the caseload, which is in the narrative, I believe it's twenty-seven percent of the students are, meet the federal definition. So that was the first piece. But the, the, the vision, the long-term vision, is to provide specific clinical services, but it'll take finding another ongoing chunk of money in order to make that happen.
Okay. And then just the, the last question is, we, yeah, seventh period, but have we talked about, I don't know what conversations have been had with cabinet or leadership around, you know, spreading out the San Marcos block schedule? You know, some of the conversations that I've had with folks is, it seems like it would be maybe even cost-effective, as opposed to spending more money. And as an SBCC employee, I, you know, I see a large number of students come from San Marcos who are mid-year grads, who are able to finish up those classes, who are able to meet their requirements, and, and do more with their schedule. I was just wondering where, if that's been had as a conversation? I'm sure it has, but just kind of what the thoughts around that have been.
We have a small conversation in a couple weeks about the four-by-four block. To your point is, it's a very, it's a very different use of time. What's actually impressive is that San Marcos has been on that schedule for, I'm looking at Dr. Wagner, twenty?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years. I did my master's thesis on it six years after San Marcos changed the schedule. They must have been like one of the first in the state to do it. It's been there for a long time. There, there are tremendous benefits. There are challenges. And just know that we are going to start that conversation. That has to be a very broad stakeholder-driven conversation. But when you want to think about access to a longer school day, the San Marcos block schedule has some tremendous advantages.
And, and just the, the amount of time, I can appreciate the amount of time that students get to spend on a subject, really get to learn it, really get to master it. You know, we, I think we kind of stay mired in this idea that a class in high school has to be a year long, and that's the only way to get real mastery. That's not necessarily true. Even SBCC has programs that are a little more accelerated, where mastery is actually shown at higher rates when something's accelerated. Again, I know after tonight, my voice doesn't really matter, as, as, you know, on the, up on the dais, but I would really encourage us to, to just have that conversation, talk to CSEA, take to SBTA, and just kind of, you know, monkey around with it. I, I think it would be a wonderful model for us to follow if we can't find something else. My personal vote, if we had a, if we had to choose between a seventh period day and a, and a four-by-four block, I'd just go for a four-by-four block. Just because, again, I've, I've seen the benefits of it, and I, I've been in this, I, I went to schools that were seventh period, and, yeah, I just, it just feels like it would just do more for our students and a lot more for our community.
And that very much would involve conversation and input with SBTA. Yeah. Before we, or any other questions about the proposals? So I want to offer now some, I guess, a question for the board. And this is something that we look at often in cabinet, like, when should we involve the board in a, a vote about a position, about, it's really an allocation of resources? You know, and if it's, if it's a minor change, we don't bring those to the board. These are obviously very large budget items, and it's really a timing question. At some point, all, all of these, I would ask for the board to vote on them, because they're, they are such, it's a big sum. To the timing question, we have some time, but when we come back in January, it's amazing how fast our minds have to turn towards the hiring and staffing process. So we're going to bring a financial model, first interim, so you can see what this would look like in terms of the budget flow. I, I would say that your team needs some direction and some votes in January, because the hiring of APs would unfold pretty quickly. The classified positions, some of those, we could actually, if we can afford it this year, some of these we could actually put in place this fiscal year. You know, especially like the gardeners and those things. I mean, those needs are real. The certificated staffing, that's clearly a next year, but we begin the, the analysis of our needs. I mean, students pick their courses in February. If we are going to start allowing selective seventh-period choices, we would need to know that as we go into student course selection. So just realize, it's, it is a spring process, but from a governance budget standpoint, we really need some answers by January. So I will be working with Ms. Tay about that budget model, and also with two new board members coming on first interim. I think that would be premature to ask them to vote on that, but they're also going to be educated by me in meetings that we need some decisions by the whole governance board, I'd say, in January. Okay? Questions about that? Does that make sense?
Well, I would just say that it would be great, I think your Friday letters are really important to just keep it transparent of what's going on, so that we're on top of that. So I would just say, can be, continue to be consistent, but add it there if possible.
Sorry. Guess that's me.
Yeah.
So I would just ask, how does that then, the timeline, go with the contract negotiations? Is that, would that impact that?
So we will be beginning negotiations in January, early January. How long it will take us? Hopefully, we're done in three months. I mean, last year, I think it took us about three months. Just know that we, we are very mindful that as we bring these budget suggestions, that we understand that we're going to the table. And I think we've been consistent, superintendent, board, and leadership, that employee compensation is, has been, and needs to be one of our highest priorities. All right? But it doesn't need to be the only priority. I mean, the, the benefit for students as we come into some better financial times, it should be across all groups.
And just to say, the student conversations that we had at the last board meeting, prior to our board meeting, the students actually requested a seventh period. So it'd be really cool to be able to talk to them and share where we're heading, you know, at such a quick pace. So I think that's exciting. And they wanted that, because they wanted to have an opportunity to take more electives. And they, when, when I actually asked, would you prefer a seventh period or a block schedule? They, they said they would prefer a seventh period. So I do want to turn, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your input.
Dr. Beckio, we have scheduled, and I must say, I'm adding all these minutes, and it says, we have forty minutes of reports and board policies. And forty minutes, and that's without questions, if you're just going to sit there and, sit there blindly and stare at you. So I do want to turn to my fellow board members. I'm not sure if Ms. Parker wants to be here until midnight on her last board meeting, Mr. Ishmael Peres Uyua. So I want to kind of get a little, kind of...
We can leave early, right?
So I'm looking to the board for their ideas on, does this seem doable? We are at ten fifteen, so, and I know our, are there, I know we pushed some things from the last time. So I guess, first, let me ask this, Dr. Ramirez and Ms. Carey. Are there, do you feel that it's important that we hear all of these dashboards, we, all five of them, tonight?
Yes, for the purposes of being able to appropriately document our progress on the California dashboard, we would need to have, report on them to, to you as a board.
And tonight is the night it needs to be done?
That's correct, because we need to be able to do that by December third, and our, our next board meeting is subsequent to that.
So I guess that answers that question. I think we will be removing ten, eleven, twelve first reading board policies. Is that going to cause any duress?
No.
Okay. So we'll remove those. I do think we need to also remember that we should maybe look to having workshops with these series of policies, that we could get a bulk of them done, like we were doing in the past, for the future. But with that said, I'm going to be quiet, and we're going to move on to report discussion agenda, item five.
I just had a suggestion, because having looked through the reports, there's a lot of overlap, because it goes through the same, so maybe we can collapse them altogether? Would that work?
We absolutely can.
Thank you. Because I found myself reading the slides, thinking, wait, wait, I just read this. Right? And so it seems like there's, the first four slides of each one, roughly, are the same.
Yes, we can absolutely save on some time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Dr. Reed, once again, board. Yes, in the interest of time, there are, these indicator reports are very much linked. And just to start to provide you some context, this document is an opportunity for us to just lay out where many of these pieces fit together. I won't go through all of them, but you can see from the development of an interim strategic plan, all the way through items around federal accountability. You kind of see it in a, in a calendar format, that allows you to see when things either have come up or will come up throughout the year, including the development of the LCAP and the, and the school plans that will be forthcoming once the calendar turns. We're really going to make a, a little pivot toward living in two years, and completing one and planning for the next. So this was just our attempt to provide you with some context. It's a document that we intend to just bring forward anytime we talk about these matters, just as a reference point, so you can feel free to ask questions as we go along. With that said, we'll go ahead and transition to the slide deck. As Ms. Capps very much noticed, the, the, the slide deck really reports on all of them holistically, although you will see in each individual report that, that there are some standalone items and narratives. So I will just begin by offering a, a, a high-level view and a framing opportunity. So here's the, the context. As you know, the California School Dashboard that was launched in 2017 is a new state accountability system. It is intended to move us away from a single metric. As, as many of you may know, formerly the Academic Performance Index, or API, was a single quantitative value that tried to represent the academic progress of a school. After the entire middle child left behind era, we have come to, to realize just how limiting and narrowing and reductive that, that has been in representing our schools and, and the student populations we serve. So this is, this dashboard is really built on a combination of local data, and data that is assumptive, robust all throughout. Much of it is represented also in the LCAP, so there are a couple of priorities that we won't mention tonight, that you can expect to see there as well. In total, there are eight state priority areas. The ones that you'll be hearing on tonight are basically those, those top, those top seven, with the exception of priorities four, five, and eight. But these are required to be measured and discussed with, with you as a board annually. If you look at, at the timeline that I represented at the beginning, we are looking to space these out and bring some back, potentially in the spring, just to be able to give you more of a, of a formative look at where we are as, as a district. This current report, this all based on seventeen, eighteen school year, and, and again, as you can see in that calendar, we are moving to a more meaningful cycle, we believe, in the eighteen, nineteen school year. With that, I'd like to go ahead and launch into the first part, which is local priority one, basic services. This just gives you a high-level view. You have the narrative, and, and I will certainly answer any questions, but effectively, basic services incorporates, it's one of the eight state priorities, but incorporates all of those metrics and expectations laid out in the Williams Act settlement. And I, I also would, would remind the board that there are opportunities where you will have a, a chance to, to see progress when we bring quarterly reports and an annual review, then our annual review from the county office. But in some, they, they focus primarily on appropriate credentialing and the ability to have facilities in good repair. So if you see, these are some metrics that we pulled, given our teacher assignments. So you, you see there misassignments relative to the teaching of our English learners, total misassignments, thirty-six, and that is cases where there might be a, a credentialing waiver that we might, as you've seen in the past, bring forward, and then vacant teacher positions. And this, again, is a representation of our entire certificated staff. Number of percentage of students without access to their own copies of standards-aligned instructional materials. We've had these conversations in the past, and we are in that period of flux, certainly more in certain areas than others. So I won't belabor that particular point, but our collaboration will continue and as continued with the county office of ed around being able to, to really understand where those shifts have happened and how to represent them to you as a board. And finally, the identified instances where facilities do not meet the good repair standard, and that is one, and I just wanted to highlight that that's already been addressed. And Mr. Visalini's and our, Mr. Visalini staff, our facility staff, our, our maintenance crews are really diligent about working with us the moment that, that those things come to the surface, and immediately addressing those. So principals, a note to immediately submit work orders and, and, and just the maintenance crews is, and facilities crew is tremendous, in being able to address those very quickly. So with that, that, that really is a high-level view of just basic services. Again, I would open it up to any questions you may have, or any clarification you may need.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to priority area two, California Dashboard Local Indicator Report.
So we're going to keep rotating through some of us here. You'll hear me speak, and then Raul, and then Fran, and then me again. For local priority area two, which is implementation of state academic standards, I would commend to people the narrative, and especially the beginning and end sections of the narrative, which, just to remind us that with California's adoption of Common Core standards, you know, when they became the California state standards, it was eight years ago, and it is no overstatement to say that those were, you know, really significant shifts in how we approach teaching and learning, with far more complexity attendant to them, and far more depth and rigor of knowledge and of student skill building. So that has put tremendous demands on our professional learning programming, just to even study and design and respond to and implement standards. We are very, we are way past the initial stages of that. We are still, though, what I would consider in transition and, and in implementing those standards. The narrative allows you to see a slice of that for every subject area, which is particularly relevant for the secondary space. And I would just remind folks that while instructional materials are related to curriculum, they are just one part of curriculum and standards. They are one way to address and, and make sure that the standards are in place, and that students are mastering them. But that also, our developing assessment continuum is another piece of that, as well as our evolving pedagogy. And that's why I say, you know, curriculum, state standards is, are addressed not just through instructional materials, but through really that three-pronged approach of curriculum and instruction and assessment. I just, there's also a part of priority two that has to do with access to standards, and we're going to talk a lot more... with access to standards. And we're going to talk a lot more about access with priority seven. So, unless there are any questions about priority area two, we can move to priority area three.
I think let's move to the third priority area. Thank you.
All right. In priority three, what we're talking about is parent engagement. And as your narrative indicates and is highlighted here in the slide deck, this is really, the tables that you see are reflective of the California Parent Survey results that is administered or provided or offered to all families in the district. We, if you have an opportunity to review the tables, you'll see that the number of respondents is very robust. And we really take pride in trying to, to elicit as much feedback from as many of our parents as possible. So, just to give you a point of reference, in seventeen eighteen, we received responses from over thirty-five hundred parents in the district. And you see the breakdown there, and in terms of strongly agree or agree, that the school allows input and welcomes parent contributions. That has become a good data point for us, and one that has been consistent from year to year. It's something that forms the basis of not only our LCAP, but also our single plans, our school plans. What I would also say is that we have really taken to heart parent engagement and trying to provide a fairly wide continuum of offerings from events to, to programming that provide parents quite a varied experience and multiple access points, from everything, from just participation, all the way to more deep engagement and working committees and such. So, again, here, I'd like to say that this is a huge point of pride for me personally and professionally, having worked in this district, but also, I think, a real standard bearer, I think, in the county when it comes to just how robust programming and opportunities that we provide for our parents. We know that there's more work to be done, certainly in the realm of language access, providing more variety and multiple opportunities for our parents in our secondary schools. But just some of those cornerstones from the DLEC representation and support, all the way now this year, we trained all of our ELACs at the school level. So, those are just big, big steps forward that have just proven to be just iterative from year to year. And we are certainly looking for more and better ways to outreach to parents of all backgrounds, knowing that we still have a ways to go in terms of really connecting effectively and authentically with all of our audiences. But we have really put forward great programming and just put forward, I think, a quality set of events at the school level, at district level, and also in connection with our community and community partners. So, I will stop there, and certainly willing to respond to any questions that may, you may have at this time.
Mr. Paredes-Huguet.
Sorry, I didn't want to slow down the train. Just wanted to give kudos for all the work that Dr. Ramirez did when he was the director for EL engagement and parent engagement, and the work that Ms. Laura's Horton is doing. I remember starting with Cal Soap a long time ago and coming to an ELAC meeting and being really disheartened by what I saw. It was basically an opportunity for a principal to tell parents what they were doing with very little to no input. And I've been able to go to ELAC meetings, ELAC meetings and see that evolve. It's, as you said, there's still work to be done. We still have to develop it across the board to make sure that there is parity and there is engagement. But I'm really heartened to see the work that's being done, that's been done over the years. And I just want to commend you and Ms. Laura's Horton for the work that you've been doing and for your staff, all the work that your staff has been doing. And I encourage you to keep going. I'd love to see these respondent numbers, you know, hit closer to what our actual population is. That may never happen. I know how statistics work and how surveys work, but it'd be great to see that go up to make sure that our parents not only see these things, but feel like they can respond to them. Because it's numbers we don't see that kind of scare me. If we saw three thousand respondents, but we don't see, or three thousand families respond, but we don't see twelve thousand families respond, that's a little scary for me. But again, you got your work cut out for you. But again, I commend you for all the strides you have made and hope that we continue working in this direction. Parent engagement is something that's very close to my heart. You know, having, you know, gone through, you know, my own personal life experiences, but I find it really important, and I hope this board and this district continues to do that work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Simms-Morton.
I just have a comment with regards to how are we, are we linking parent engagement, that those efforts to the achievement gap? Because we know the more involved parents are, then, you know, we're likely to see that achievement gap decrease. So, how are we linking those two?
It's a difficult link to make explicitly, because there, we know that there is a relationship there. We can certainly speak to it anecdotally. In the past, we actually have delved into, about two years ago, when Dr. Mora was here, and the director of EL and Parent Engagement Hall, we actually started to delve a little deeper into focus groups and ways of trying to elicit more information. A lot of it really hovers around self-efficacy and what people report back as being part of a particular group or having attended a particular, you know, piece of programming. With that said, because we're, you know, we aren't equipped necessarily to handle how to track adults. We know how to track students because we have plenty of ways to do that. But the parent audience and the family audience is certainly harder. To that, to that end, we have talked about how to inform our practices. And what we see is that the handoff from elementary to junior high and so on, we were now, now at a point where we've seen that for multiple years. Many of our DLEC parents and parents that are active in our ELAC, school site councils and such, really come from or had a starting point at some point in time with some kind of programming that we offered, even all the way going back to the Parent School Partnership, the MALDEF training that emerged over on the West Side between McKinley and, McKinley and Harding, or Parents at Avance, which is an offering that is no longer part of our district, but that certainly paved the way for programming that we offer today. So, we're still trying to figure out how to, how to really quantify that, because it's a difficult, with our current tools and ability to track that progress from parents, it's difficult over time to map that progress.
And I would just add again, on the first five, we're really trying to, again, strengthen the partnerships with the school, because that is the mission, to ensure that our kids are ready to enter kindergarten. So, to the point of even our messaging out to the parents early in terms of how the importance of being engaged in your child's school and schoolwork. So, I'd love to work together on that messaging so that we can put that in our parents that we're touching early in that. So, then we're making that link. By the time they get to the school system, that's just part of what happens.
Yes.
In terms of that, so.
And I'll just, you know, say this also. We actually have family liaisons, and one of them is focusing on our zero to five space. I offered during a past meeting, some sidebar comments, and Ms. Sims-Morton, that, you know, they're out there in the housing, in the housing space, trying to get ahold of our captive audiences. So, we're trying to meet families where they are and trying to get that connection and outreach started soon. Would be very interested in the months coming to be able to report progress on more progress and more visibility, because I think right now even our LCAP doesn't fully show some of those outreach efforts.
Yeah. And I would just add to that point, in terms of our early message, because we have newborn kits, that again, we can put the messaging from the very beginning, you know, because we meet them early, even the prenatal, the conversation that we have there with the doctor's offices and making that link. So, where we can, you know, put in our existing systems to link it with you, make sure we're putting the correct message in it. So, again, we can continue to work on that.
Sure. And last, last plug, I will, maybe it would be worthwhile, if you haven't already received invitations to win our programming, you know, is offered, so that you can see, you know, the kind of information that's being relayed to parents and the kind of connections that parents are making throughout. And I will say, a focus of that has been at the elementary, because we want to equip parents with the right tools and information, so that as the educational system becomes increasingly complex for their kids, that they have the ability to understand that and know how to advocate and work through our system.
So, I would reference the 2018-19 Baseline Family Engagement and Parent Advisory Programming. I sent that out to all of you that Maria Larios Horton provided, which is really, provides you with links to all of these, the calendared events of all of these parent engagement activities, including what you have here, quite a few elementary connections with the Latino Family Literacy Project, the MALDEF Parent School Partnership. I'm going to say this, can you help me with the pronunciation of cafecitos?
Cafecitos, yes.
So, it's another engagement, a new engagement program, and of course, with the ELAC meetings and the DLEC meetings. So, I would reference that link because it does calendar everything. And the one thing that Ms. Larios Horton said is that if you are interested in attending, to just give her a heads up so that she has the knowledge and she can steer you in the right direction in terms of best timing or such. But I feel that that was a really, really important document, and I want to acknowledge also Dr. Ramirez, the great work going on in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to priority area six, School Climate, Student Sense of Safety and School Connectedness. Very important dashboard.
Good evening, board and colleagues. Here to present to you the local priority area six, which is school climate. We actually just launched this year's Healthy Kids Survey for twenty eighteen nineteen. But based on last year's results, we saw the same trend that we find most years, and that is that a high, elementary school students have a higher sense of safety. And then they go off into adolescence, and that sense of safety drops. Part of that is the peeling away of their innocence, and part of that is what is endemic to being a teenager in our society. And the other is that sense of connectedness to school, and it also drops. So, I am traditionally try to be a glass-half-full sort of person, but I always like to look at these sorts of statistics and say, okay, well, sixty-nine percent of elementary students feel a high sense of connectedness to school, but that means thirty-one percent do not. Secondary, forty-five percent do not. And that's where our opportunity comes, and that's where the work lives. In terms of the sense of safety, I promised Dr. Guillermo Juan that I would emphasize the fact that our climate survey last year began at the same time. It was interrupted because school was interrupted in December. And so, instead of finishing the climate survey in December, per usual, we did carry it into January, which we know we, we had the debris flow that happened after the fire. We actually didn't see a tremendous drop from previous years. So, the gaps that we see, they do mirror our gaps in achievement. Students who are more connected to school have higher levels of achievement. Students who feel connected benefit when we have a more holistic approach to improving school climate. And that's really where we're going to get the, where we're going to be able to close and, close the gaps and also address, you know, the thirty-one percent of elementary students who don't feel highly connected and the forty-five percent of secondary is through improving our school climate. So, how do we do that? That will also be talked about in priority area six. But it's really through the social emotional learning. It's all in how students feel connected to their peers, but also the relationships that they have with adults. It's all interwoven. And so, that's the foundation on which the learning takes place, is their connectedness and their sense of safety.
I think we're all in agreement that you have presented important information about school climate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that my cue? Is that like number seven?
Yes.
Appreciate your perseverance with these indicator reports.
We should do that times two speed.
And priority seven is another important priority area, Course Access. It's one that we focused very intentionally on. We are seeing the fruits of that in some really positive ways, and we still see some areas for growth. I do want to begin by saying that even though, even as things like art and PE and music remain priorities for our district, that we saw very much a leader in providing and ensuring universal access to those educational experiences in elementary school and very robust access in secondary school. Oh, sorry. And that that is something that is, serves as a point of pride for us, even as we strive to find more, you know, to avail ourselves of additional strategies and new strategies to make sure that that remains the case. I'm very eager to see what happens when we get fresher A through G data. That data always lags by a couple of years, and it's really been a focus of our counselors through the ASCA model to, you know, very intentionally focus on higher rates of A through G completion. So, we see, you know, some, it's hard to even say that it's an upward trend. There was a high year in fourteen, fifteen, but really about half our students, is the fairest way to say it, are A through G, fulfilled A through G requirements. Although, as I say, I'm very eager to see more recent data when it comes out. Is that something that we've been focusing on? And to that point, when you look at the statistics related to students, percentage of students taking at least one advanced course, you see a real jump. I think it's fifty-six to sixty-four. Starts at fifty-six, you know, five years back or so, and becomes sixty-four. And I point that out, not just because it's a success story, but also because we can, in my mind, very easily tie it to, again, very intentional efforts, specifically in our partnership that we engaged in with Equal Opportunity Schools, where that was a focus area that we had and sustained for, you know, two school years in a row, and now have brought in-house and developed our own internal algorithms for doing the same kind of screening for traditionally underrepresented students in order to enroll them in advanced courses. So, that's a success story, not just because of the numbers, but because of the story behind the numbers and the fact that it's a product of our intentionality. I've already spoken to what we see as steady VAPA and, I would say, increasing CTE footprint. And what's going to become most important with the CTE metric is the rates of students who are completing a full CTE pathway. And like with other indicator priorities, and I like how Dr. Waggonage used the affirmative phrasing there of, you know, what we will be doing to close gaps. We know that that remains one of our district's priorities. We do see areas where gaps narrow, but they are also stubborn. Sometimes they resurface. And so, it's just about continuing to be tenacious about that pattern that we see across metrics among student groups. There's something that I want to just orient you two about with these next two slides related to priority seven, and I think we will do this differently in the future. But the solutions don't necessarily, on the right, don't necessarily correspond to the problems or barriers on the left. So, I'm just going to tackle this as barriers and then solutions across both slides. Some of the barriers that we have identified through just evaluating our work against this backdrop of the, of the LCAP priority areas are things that we've heard even this backdrop of the, of the LCAP priority areas are things that we've heard even conversation about tonight, you know, the insufficiency of what has proved to be a constraint of just the number of periods in a day or the number of instructional minutes you heard from, from Principal Sharfield, you know, just the trickiness of working within the constraints that are. That, that doesn't mean they can't be overcome, but they are things that are constraints. AEREL course placement. So we've standardized that, but there's room that can be gained back in terms of how to give our English learner students more access to a broader variety of courses. And we still have what we consider inconsistent use of effective instructional strategies. I would be very confident in saying it's becoming much more consistent over time with a lot of the professional learning that you've become familiar with. I want to specifically call out the elementary examples of that with the, with the writing workshops, with GLAD. So it's becoming much more consistent. I would highlight science in the secondary space as far as pedagogical consistencies and effective instructional strategies, but the fact that there's still inconsistency there remains a barrier we'd like to address. I feel like I'm not doing this correctly. Oh, I went too far. And then actually, it's interesting how this, there's this one idea from priority seven that overlaps with priority six, and that is, you know, the amount that we're seeing this theme of the interconnectedness of a student's socio-emotional well-being with their ability to engage academically, access academic opportunities and then be successful in them. I think it's just becoming just a really prevalent theme, whether we're approaching that from the academic side of the house or the, the social, emotional and mental well-being side of the house, where the two are just so interconnected. And then I've already addressed the others. So some of the things that are, that are solutions, beginning on this page, see what's planned, are, and you're very familiar with the comprehensive mental health model. We just, you know, focused on that at our recent Safe Schools Forum, Community Forum, but also the piloting that's being done with socio-emotional curriculum. We heard about that tonight. The ongoing work with cultural proficiency programming that you're very familiar with. I referenced and alluded to what our counselors are working on through really functional and increasingly functional counselor PLCs, so adopting a PLC model for school counseling in accordance with the ASCA model and with college and career readiness as a primary goal. And then continuing with solutions, you have become much more familiar over time with the language and literacy framework, especially prevalent in the elementary grade span. There was already some talk about the family engagement framework and the success and just the pioneering programs around language access that our district boasts. And then I, we're really fortunate to have the talents of Kim Hoy and a dedicated CTE and VAPA coordinator to just lasso a space that is really variable, but crucial and of high interest, but very dynamic. So those are some of the things that we know are working well in response to some of the barriers that we've identified in the realm of course access. Seven is it, right? So we might, at this time, just say, or invite you to, to offer any comments or questions we might be able to respond to about any of these priority areas or about this cycle of needing to report on the priority areas associated with the California dashboard.
I think we're thankful that we had these reports and we appreciate them very much. So I think we'll move forward. We're not going to attempt ten and eleven and twelve, the readings of those board policies. So again, I would say that if we have more ahead, that we might plan a time to do those on another special evening. And coming events, I've already mentioned, we're having coffee with the board at Monroe, eight-thirty to nine-thirty. Any future agenda items? All right, well, I want to again just say it's been a pleasure to have both of you on the board and I appreciate your leadership and all of the work you have done and we know that we're gonna miss you and we're looking forward to staying connected though. We know how to reach you. So thank you so much for all that you've done for the board. And with that, our next meeting is Tuesday, December eleventh. Let's go.